Grand Forks City Council's meeting as a whole from Monday, August twenty eighth. Under item one, called Order one point one, welcome to the roll call.
Weigle?
Eric?
Something here, Weber?
Here.
On stage here, Bonnie?
Eric?
Sandy?
Here.
And being?
Here.
Right of two updates and information models that have been in train discussion nine of three point one request for Grand Forks Grill. EVA Wild Bill's transfer alcohol license to GF Restaurant Group LLC. Good evening.
Yes, President Sandy, members of the whole. Just it's a routine transfer on Wild Bill's operating the community for a number of years. Over those years, they've come back to council, kind of gone between a class one or a class four license. Class one is twenty one and over only your typical bar that has food. Class four is food and beverage where they're required, they can have all ages, but they're required to have a fifty fifty food to alcohol ratio. And they closed a few months ago and have now found a buyer for the building. And someone who would like to transfer their liquor license and reopen it as your typical sports bars, my understanding. They'll be called ours the Ice House. And so they're looking for your permission for the transfer today. And one of the partners, Mo, is online. So if you have any questions for him, he can.
Any questions or? Move by Osowski, is there a second, second by Bean? We have comments here, none, all those in favor, say hi. Most carries unanimously, thank you, out of three two. Good award, engineering amendment, project eighty seven oh eight, sanitary sewer, U N D East Campus Development, Mr. Lee, good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy, members of the committee. This staff report is a continuation of our project install sanitary sewer, supporting the U N D East Campus Development. Specifically, this supports Southern Memorial Stadium, Pollard, Olympic Athletic Center, Memorial Village, et cetera. There are two items in this staff report, the first is a recommendation for bid award. This project is currently out for bid and this will be open this week Thursday. But we are requesting council to bring the bid recommendation to city council next week, Tuesday. With recommendations reported at that time.
If any questions from this meeting? Comments? Move by Osowski, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bean, thank you, all those in favor, say hi. Most carries unanimously, Mr. Lee, something else I have?
Pardon me, President Sandy, there was a second component to this, I just wanted to uh to bring up, but that is a recommendation to amend the task order with. Air and Associates for Construction Services.
Excellent.
And July seventeenth, the council had approved a task order for design services. In the course of the design, the consultant recommended the specific techniques that would. Be best suited for them to manage the construction of specifically the use of directional drilling underneath University Avenue. We would like to request an amendment to that task order. For the purpose of allowing them to conduct the construction management activities. Based on their experience and their recommendation for that technology.
Is there a motion to amend the task order?
Move approval.
Move by Wango, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Osowski, Mr. Weber?
The cost difference.
Uh, this, uh, this amendment would be an additional forty eight thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all those, yes, Mr. Bean?
Yeah, I just had the question now. Air and Associates is the same, same permanent part of the ownership of the. Development, right?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Brian is part of the ownership of the original developer?
I think they are.
So. I don't, I'm a bit of a concerned about that. But I do think. This, you talked about the directional boring, which is another issue, right?
Yeah, I, I, uh, Mr. Bean, I do understand your concerns. Initially, we had planned on conducting the construction management in-house, having our engineering staff personnel perform that. Because of the technique that they're recommending, there is a much tighter tolerance for directional drilling of sanitary sewer. Compared to, say, directional water main, our staff is overseeing directional water main. But based on tight tolerances, I feel that their experience would be more valuable and making sure we have successful projects.
I just think we need to get aware.
Thank you, good point, Mr. Bean. There's a motion in the second, any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Close sign. Most carries unanimously, thank you, mention new one, item three point three, bid award, project eighty seven seventeen. Flood wall crack, we. She Daniel, good evening.
Thank you, President Sandy, members of the committee. So the project I've got for you tonight is a crack repair on our flood wall here, part of the flood protection system. It is actually located right here downtown here, the Dever's opening in the wall. This project is proposed to include just some concrete repairs inside and then. The water stop component of the wall itself at this location is also a little bit damaged. So the project would go in and repair these elements. We opened bids for this project last Thursday and we had one bidder on the project. It was submitted by Dirty Deeds Dirtwork in the amount of ninety six thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars, which is about nine percent over the engineer's estimate. Given that there are only bidder, we are at this time recommending award the contract, however. This is a contractor that we have never worked with at the city before, so we're doing some investigation. Into previous jobs, they've done similar work, other experienced by owners of other projects, just to. Verify that we're getting a contractor that's capable of doing what we've done. Quite important asset that we have here in our community, so we will return to council next week with a final recommendation for this project.
Great, how much questions, Mr. Osowski, move's approval, sir, second? Second by Bean, thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say hi. Close sign, most carries unanimously, thank Mr. Danielson, three point four. Cost participation and maintenance agreement, destruction and maintenance agreement and plans and specifications for project seventy nine, seventy eight. Reconstruct Washington Street, Fifth Avenue South, First Avenue North, Mr. Franco, wearing jacket and tie today.
Sure, let's, thank you very much, President Sandy. Uh, so more for later on this evening. But thank you very much. I don't want to be the odd man out this time around like it was last time. So project we have before us this evening is the Washington, our past reconstruction project, this project is looking at reconstructing. Uh, Washington from just north of Dever's Avenue through and including the intersection of First Avenue North, including. Reconstruction of sidewalks, taking a new pond, replacing the lift station in that area, rehabilitating the retaining wall. And doing some rehabilitation work on the bridge itself. As President Sandy mentioned, this is a multiple of agenda item, we have two different agreements, one of them is the cost participation and maintenance agreement. That is the standard agreement between the city and the North Dakota Department of Transportation. Uh, cost splits in that are identified as ten percent city and the rest is being handled eighty percent federal, ten or just under ten percent for. State. And that is our standard agreement with the DOT, there is some additional language in there because of working with railroad. DOT cannot invoice BNSF directly, so they have to invoice the city for their portion, we then invoice BNSF for their portion. We receive payment from BNSF and once we receive payment from BNSF, we can then pass that along to DOT. The construction maintenance agreement, that is the agreement between DOT, BNSF and the city. Um, and that has been something that I've been working with city attorney on. You know, as well, and then plans and specifications to get this project off the ground right now, this is scheduled for an October bid opening. And construction starting next year. Overall, construction estimate is currently right around ten and a half million. Total project cost is uh. Right around fifteen million, give or take. Yeah, total cost about fifteen point seven million. Uh, city share of all that is about one point five, one point six million, which is also why. Staff recommendation includes having a budget amendment included in that as well, because right now in our budget, we only have about one point three million budget in port. So with that, staff's recommending approval of the cost participation maintenance agreement contingent upon review by city attorney. Constructive, construction and maintenance agreement with DOT contingent upon city attorney review. Approval of plans and specifications and any necessary budget amendment for the project.
Mr. Franco, thank you, questions, Mr. Bean, yes, question?
Yeah, Mr. Franco, what, what is the railroad actually doing on this project? Or they're not rebuilding their, their bridge?
The, they are not rebuilding their bridge, their cost participation is on the rehabilitation of the bridge.
So it's being rehabilitated versus being rebuilt?
Correct. All repairs, correct, ceiling, that's replacement of the birdcage or the bird netting underneath.
And Mr. Weber, I know at one time you listed another lady. Is that right?
That's right.
Okay. But it's not being rebuilt, so I just. Just wanted to see if you had any comments.
No.
I'm local.
A second.
Move by Bean, second by Osowski, further comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say hi.
Hi. Hi.
Close sign. Most carries unanimously, thank you, Franco. Three point five, twenty twenty census adjusted, urban area, I'm wondering, Mr. Kubo, good evening.
Good evening. This is an item that they. Basically happens every ten years, the census puts out, uh, once they've done, finished their accounting, they put out. What they consider urban area. And then afterwards. Once that's released. The F A, or Federal Highway always uses these numbers for how they. Disperse their urban funding and they give us a chance to adjust those boundaries to make sure that we are including all the urban area. Within the region that it will be considered for urban funding and. Basically a formality, there's been a lot of work on staff level between. Grand Forks staff and East Grand Forks staff because East Grand Forks is considered probably the urban area. And. So we're, this is the one that everyone kind of has agreed on, we're looking for the adoption of this. It is something that the North Dakota U N D is requesting that the cities understand. That this is going to be the urban area and where the urban funding will be allowed to be spent.
Thank you, so you're simply looking for a motion on the second for us to approve and agree with this new map for the urban area?
It'll have to be a resolution, yeah.
Resolution, right.
I have a question, do we even get a choice on where the lines are drawn or no? It's kind of chosen.
It's, we've worked through it all staff and how. What areas are really, really looking at into the future, especially just mostly ten years into the future for them until the next census comes around. Of what you're really doing, you've built out. Things like the. Forty seventh Avenue interchange is, is, wasn't considered urban by the census, but we want to make sure that area is going to be within that.
Motion by Osowski, second by Lumsky, further discussion, anyone? Hearing none, all those in favor, say hi. Close sign. Most carries unanimously. Thank you. And three point six. Update on the children's museum, Mr. Phil.
Hey, Council President Sandy, thanks for, uh, we have next three items, there's some pretty important, uh, short, uh, projects that. Based upon council member Osowski's request, Sally Muscavage is here, along with her team to give you an update on the project and then. We've asked Marines Thorsted on behalf of the city Grand Forks can go over the city's funding of that ten million dollars. That we discussed in the city budget, so without, we're gonna hand it over to Sally and then Marines are gonna give you an update on where we're at with the budget in anticipation of. At the next city council meeting, I guess on the seventeenth, we're gonna talk about budget itself.
Great, thank you, Mr. Phil. Ms. Muscavage, good evening. Thanks for being here.
Yeah, thank you, everybody. Um, I'm here on behalf of the Grand Forks Children's Museum and we're very excited about this project and the idea is to build. A destination facility in Grand Forks, Altru has donated the land at the site. Adjacent to Choice Health Fitness as represented on the map. We can go on to the next slide. And we're planning for a two-story building with uh. Twenty eight thousand square feet to seven thousand square foot exhibit spaces of open-ended. Play-based learning and exploration and fun and a vertical maze climber connecting the two floors. We've been working on this for over three years and we've received some planning grants and grants from the state of North Dakota. And then we've also received private support in. Planning of this project and we're excited to bring it to Grand Forks.
Good evening, uh, President Sandy, members of the committee. So what this slide will show you, um, just really reminder of what we spoke about during the presentation of the mayor's budget. Just to, as a reminder, I'll, I'll go through these numbers for you again. Uh, and the mayor's role, you know, shift of how to use those economic development dollars for your consideration. Uh, once again, that final budget is up for approval uh in September, September eighteenth. But really that plan with the ten million dollars is over a ten-year period of time. Uh, that would, of course, be pending approval of the twenty four budget and how we get there, as we have previously set aside three million dollars for strategic initiative. Uh, that would be pulled in as part of this concept for the children's museum. As well as you can see at the bottom there, two and a half million dollar cash, um, those would be your two upfront. Uh, dollar amounts that we've worked through within an agreement that would come forward to you separately. Uh, and that would come from your job development authority, uh, fund fight on access. But along with that, and over a ten-year period, it would include. Uh, four hundred thousand dollars a year over ten years for that almost four million that's included on this slide. As well as then at the very end, as we build up those beautification funds, what would be projected is to use five hundred thousand dollars of those beautification fund that build up in year twenty thirty. Uh, to, to finish off, um, that ten billion dollar total, we go to the next slide. Um, actually, that is all I have, but what I did want to also point out, uh, we did as a separate handout. Um, attached with the agenda is just that projection, so you can see the cash flow of our fund twenty one sixty three. That will show you how that cash flows out, we don't show the full ten-year period, but it'll give you a sense on where those dollars are flowing in. Uh, but I'm here if any questions and I'm sure Sally is here as well.
I don't, can you ask a question? What is the board actively doing? Where are you in the process?
Well, we meet every other week and we're actively engaged in the community, we've been going to a lot of the different events around. Community, we've received two hundred thousand dollar planning grants from the state of North Dakota, so we've planned the building concepts, the exhibit concepts. And then we received a five million dollar grant from the North Dakota State Legislative Session and we're working on a grant for five million dollars from the state. On a tour, tourism, uh, out of their Destination Development Fund. Which this money from the city would be key in our success for that grant, which will be awarded in November and due next Thursday.
So on grants, you're, so you're working on getting grants, you're also fundraising?
Yep, we're also fundraising, we've raised over five million dollars privately from the business community and. Other philanthropic individuals from around and we're actively engaged in fundraising and. You know, we've secured some pretty significant gifts from the business community.
So, Osowski, did you have a question?
Uh, yes, sir.
Nice to hear.
My turn? Um, I was just wondering if you could talk a little bit more about. Like the exhibits or what exactly is going to go on inside that building, I mean, there were. Like three small photos and that was about it. Um, I've heard around that media, like the exhibits might change throughout the years and just kind of.
Yeah, we have two seven thousand square foot exhibit spaces planned and we've hired Toboggan Design and they. Have worked with the Winnipeg Children's Museum and other, they've been in business for twenty years and so they've sort of focused in. On our theme is going to be land and sky, to sort of. Feature the region's strengths that we have, and so we've been working with donors to secure naming rates on those exhibits. And then the climber, the multi-level two-story climber will be both, and so, you know, possibly that could. You know, again, depending on, um. Where the funding comes from, it really will play like if you have a culture and is it the growth of seeds or do you have, um. You know, is it other produce or what is, what is in there and then. Potentially you could talk about the strengths like the river in the habitat and upstairs in the sky zone, you could explore elements of clouds, you could fly airplanes, you could. Learn about the drone industry and then it also programming that will. You know, go along with that.
All right, um, you stated that you've raised what, five million dollars so far with donations?
Private donations? Yep.
Um. Do you have a list of who has been donating to this museum and how much?
Of course we do, yep.
Um, could you provide that?
No.
No?
Not we won't.
Okay, um, do you know if there's been any foreign investment? Into this museum?
No foreign investment.
All right. Um.
I would assume at some point the donor list will become.
Yeah, I mean, I suppose we could.
At some point when the facility is built, people are wanting their names on. You know, walls and things, it will.
Most of the donors have chosen to be listed as part of making opportunities, our families contributed to it. Um, we own up construction and we made a significant gift to the project. Um, and a lot of other local, everybody's been local to the community.
So all. Of the five million dollars came from within Grand Forks?
Correct.
And do they have, do those people have any ties to foreign investment? You know, I did some reading today online about how the CCP. Likes to funnel money into K three twelve education and so I would just like to make sure that, you know. We're not going to put ourselves into a situation. Um, where then they are controlling what is being taught.
Align our programming with the state education system and we've been already working with the Grand Forks Public Schools and. We're thinking that we are going to have school kids coming from around the region and other places. And then, um, you know, our core, our curriculum will align with the state standards and we'll be working with people in our community that'll be employed here, that'll. Help write the curriculum, we'll be working with volunteers and. In no way do we intend to have the CCP controlling our. Education.
I guess my main two concerns are the foreign investment in the project and especially your unwillingness to share. Um, where the donations are coming from and also, you know, I would like to see. Us stay away from, or your museum, and stay away from. A more woke agenda, I should say, you know, I. I don't think that some of those things, you know, when we get to certain months. I don't think that those things should be displayed for children to see and also I think we can all learn a lot from. You know, other companies who have pushed these types of agendas. And I mean, if we're going to financially back this project, I hope that your vision is to, you know. Continue to bring in all sorts of, I guess, funds, but ones that align with just a broader spectrum and not just the chosen few.
You know, yeah, we'd love to have funds from a very broad spectrum, so if you know anybody that we can connect with, we're actively in our fundraising. Um, we have planning committees, you know, if you want to get engaged on those, and we're volunteers from the city, uh, from. Community and actually we're trying to reach people too from outside of the community because we really want this to be a draw for tourism and. For the region and we're thinking this is going to be a destination for people and so. We appreciate any help that you want to give it.
I guess the woke agenda and the foreign investment are three to be concerns, okay?
I would, I would say, Council President Sandy, you've made it clear, you know, even if it's proven the budget and we have a funding formula. That it will require an agreement with, with the group on our contributions on certain triggers and. What's going to have to happen as part of that, so just so you know, it's, it's in the budget, but like everything in the budget, we come back here every, every week to say, okay, we want to now move forward with this project. It's in the budget and in this case we'd have a development agreement about, you know, what criteria that we're going to have to distribute our monies, generally the city. Unlike most governments, you have to spend the money and then we reimburse with expense that we can audit and those sorts of things, so. It'll, it'll require a, a development agreement that we move forward with, so all this input is really important for us. So when we work with Mr. Gossett, um, after the budget is approved, if you so approve, then we can come back with a development agreement.
Mr. Bean, Mr. Bean?
Maybe Todd, you can do it, one of the things we've seen, what I've saw with what Mr. Thorsted wrote forward is this is a. Looking forward at commitment to future years and yet we can't commit future councils, right? So it would be a part of every year's budgets as you go forward. With the intent that future councils would stay committed to whatever we do, our plan.
I think that's important of the development agreement that, you know, you have the full face of the city Grand Force, that a council approved this agreement, it has a multi-year plan. And there's always odds and agreements, but that would be our intent of why we want to memorialize it through a development agreement. Not to say that something can't happen five, ten years from now, but I think most city councils, plus or minus, have always held the commitments of previous councils.
And then we could, the other question would be just the timeline that we anticipate, when, of course, when the. Project would potentially start and then when we would actually have the money forward?
Yeah, we're hoping that we can begin like moving some dirt, maybe we could get, um, like renew the existing foundation, for example. As early as next year in twenty four and then really ramp up with the groundbreaking and the big major construction in the spring of twenty five. And that's all dependent on funding, of course.
Speaking of funding, did you get your letter? The, the letter that you were looking for, for the, for your next grant, when you state you did get the.
From the city, you mean the letter of support from the city? I have not received that, but Meredith said that she was gonna get it to me and I.
Great.
She said it today.
I'm sure she'll get it to you tomorrow.
Yes, we are packaging that round up, it's due on Thursday, so.
Well, good luck with that, thank you for coming in, any other, Mr. Osowski?
Awesome, are there, so you mentioned that, you know, maybe in comparison, it would be like the Winnipeg Museum.
Yeah.
Is there any others that maybe I could look into to?
Say Winnipeg would be a really good one in size comparison, okay.
Um, what about like agenda wise or, you know.
For what?
Agenda-wise or what's going to be inside, is, is that the same? Um, type of concept?
Winnipeg, we has the same exhibit designer and so that's, um, there's several different exhibit designers and those are the. Um, things that the kids use for their play and so there's different companies that you can hire to do exhibit design and we've hired Toboggan. And they've done, um, I guess you could look them up online, they've done many projects around the area, but we've also looked at, um, projects in South Dakota and we've looked at the, um. St. Paul Children's Museum, I personally went to the Naples one, I mean, there's children's museums all over the country. We do full steam ahead, that's one of the programings that we did and we're going to do it again, it's October first through eighth, we had over seven thousand people through last year, we're really excited about it, it's in the Grand Forks Curling Club. And so I guess if you want to see something that we do, um, that's full steam ahead and it's October first through eighth. And, uh, we're going to have students coming through during the daytime of the week in two different shifts and then. Um, private groups come in between that and then after school hours. Thank you, there isn't like an agenda.
It was an overwhelming success last year.
It was, it's wonderful, our agenda is to have kids have fun, get them off their tablets, have them playing outside, running, um. And to have.
And the Curling Club's a great location for it.
It really is, yeah, works out great.
Mr. Weber, did you, no, Mr. Lumsky?
How much more do you have to fundraise?
Well, that's the million dollar question, but forty five million dollar fundraising goal and if we're at twenty, then. Twenty five, but hopefully we get this next five million dollar grant and.
So you have twenty five more million to raise?
Correct.
And then can you, I know you've been pushing.
Yes.
Do you speak American Express?
We do.
I know this project's been, been, uh, very important to you, can you tell us why? Why you picked the children's museum and, and why you see Grand Forks needing this?
Um. I have gotten involved, I have two kids. And, um, we travel and we often go to children's museums and stuff, we're employers in town, we have a couple hundred employees, they have kids. And, um, I've heard from a lot of workers, they say, you know. Girlfriend doesn't want to live here anymore, we're gonna move to Denver, there's nothing to do in Grand Forks, there's nothing to do and I love Grand Forks, I think it's the greatest place ever, I think that. That we need to just continue to invest in your community and, and I think that, um. I'm hopeful, I think this, this is going to change the Grand Forks, it's going to give people something more to do with the winter, it'll. Be a draw when people come for hockey games, you'll be able to go to it. So I think that if we don't continue to invest in our community, that even the infrastructure that we build, it, uh, it won't be necessary if. We continue to get smaller. We continue to get smaller, we gotta grow.
Thank you.
Mr. Weber?
Thank you. Thank you, President Sandy. Um. Thanks, thanks for your work on this. Um. In my eleven plus years on on council, it seems like this is something that's been brewing for a long time. I've heard suggestions that it's maybe been twenty plus years in in the works. And uh, thank you for your and your family's involvement to bring so much energy to this. Um, uh, this is uh, important workforce development issue, one of our our main economic development challenges, this does help. Uh, keep graduates from UND and and they're growing families here, uh, et cetera. Additionally, uh, when we did a study a few years back about uh. What we can do in the city to increase retail options, uh, one of the main findings was that. Destination uh, opportunities like this uh, can drive shopping and I know. You know, we we all have lots of different concerns, but one of the recurring concerns for Grand Forks citizens and taxpayers. Is uh, en- enhance shopping opportunities, so retail. And so I think that this uh, would just do so many wonderful things for our community and and thanks again for your, your work.
Yes, thank you.
Any additional questions?
I want to answer her question, I want my kids to live here when I'm old.
Thank you. Moving very long, I'm three point seven Grand Forks Health and Wellness Multi-Use Facility, three quarters cent gross, retail sales tax extension.
Council President Sandy and members of K L, uh, thanks for having us here and thanks for letting us work on these projects stuff. You know, a couple of years ago, we've never, we've never have thought about a hundred million dollar project here. Uh, but here we are and it's a sign up, well, all the great things that are going on in Grand Forks. Um, so I just want to give you an update when we were here two weeks ago, kind of some of the progress that that we've made, um, meeting with various groups. Um, in the feasibility study, it prioritized the three um. Priorities, number one priority was the turf, number two was aquatic and then number three was courts. We did have a a large, two large group meetings and I can confirm based upon that feedback that it's still a priority. And then within that priority, what we've heard from the uh, the turf is soccer, basketball, softball, lacrosse. Well, there's lots of demand and I think when this turf facility gets built, um, it's it's going to really be a busy place. Despite, you know, having Pollard and all those things, I think the other untapped resource we really haven't aggressively gone after that we heard. Is all the regional high schools um, that are in our region, um, that are going to need a facility like this, is what we heard also. The one thing we did here that um, we're going to brief you on is um, the need for a track. And so as part of one of the concepts, we did incorporate a track, a three hundred meter track around the facility, very similar to what Pollard has. Because that's what we heard across the board as an addition, not a walking track like you see at Choice Health and Fitness, but a. Uh, three hundred meter track is needed. So that's why we, that was a late addition to this uh, program because one of the key things is the. Mayor Bocinski has brought in is, you know, once you build a turf facility. And you don't incorporate something like that, it's really going to be hard to expand. So um, that's what we heard on the turf. On the aquatic, we heard the fifty meter pool is is the way to go, doing a compromise if I. Stretch would be a big mistake. So um, we do have a fifty meter, it sounds from all corridors, um, we're doing the right things. We heard lap swimming, swimming lessons, you know, safety kinds of things. And then swimming and diving is what we heard in that, in that area. One thing on the cur- course that we really were confirmed was pickleball is is an important thing. And as we well know, but with Hislop going away in twenty twenty five, pickleball will go away with the courses that are in there and then the aquatic center. So the trying to replace those facilities, we heard. Less of a need for the basketball and volleyball. So that's why when we go through it, that's why it's prioritized as as the third place. We heard from the groups and you heard this in the surveys is that there's need for both facilities, uh, the indoor facility and the aquatic facility. So we heard that again. Um, and I think to Mr. Vice President Weber, what you said, you know, you talked about the market capture study and we talked about we were. A lot of amenities, whether it was children museum or recreational and in one giant leap forward. Um, we're going to, with these, with this facility, we're going, really going to move ourselves forward with many things, recreational. As well as what Ms. Muscavish talked about with the children's museum. As we move forward, the facility that we also looked at is, um, we're trying to reduce the capital costs and we're looking at it just as smaller pool at Choice Health and Fitness. There's like almost five million dollars in retrofit costs to build it all brand new, there was reducing some capital costs on that. The other part of printing it out as an integrated facility, we want to keep the BMX track where it's at, I think, with a lot of time and effort. And that's probably upwards of a five hundred thousand million dollar add on this too, to try to relocate that. So we're trying to um, keep everything where we're at. Um, the other thing we talked about is, um, after this presentation, you're going to talk about the underpass. So we're really, we think this is a really. Um, for glowing remarks about, we hit it, the mark about integrating with the community facility. South of the Alara Center, that makes a lot of sense to people, bringing it all together. Especially with the Career Impact Academy in the north end of Forty Second with the soon to come Forty Second Underpass and then. Um, these facilities really complementing the Alara Center when we were here in twenty twenty nine. Uh, or thirty, well, you'll see a whole brand new corridor and that's going to be quite incredible as we move forward. Those are the really major highlights, but uh, thanks for always work on this, uh, cer- certainly City Grand Forks, we've kind of taken over the project. Uh, but the other thing we've heard is without us working on this three quarters cent sales tax, not only to bolster the Alara Center. Long term, um, and then also looking to build these two facilities, integrated facilities and then maintaining. We would continue to keep talking about this and it'd be, uh, before we know it, be twenty twenty nine, we haven't done anything. So this is really key and critical. It sounds like from the surveys, people, uh, the citizens are willing to extend the three quarters cent. That's important to know even with extending the three quarters cent, um, we're, we're, other than Bismarck, we're, we're, we have a less of a sales tax. And all of our comparable benchmark communities in North Dakota. So we're still competitive in that, in that vein. Um, in our, in our areas. So with that, I'd like to have the consultant can give you over some of the paradigm, um. Is Zach's going to go over that PowerPoint presentation? We just loaded it up this afternoon so you could. See kind of what we're talking about, give us some feedback and then reason to come up there and. There's lots of financial work that Marine and and Mike Bassall from Finance have done to try to get us to be able to move forward with this project, protect the Alara Center. And then also do capital maintenance on on these new facilities over time. Um. Mr. Helliers here from the Grand Forks Park District, you know, we're estimating about five hundred thousand in operating expenses and so we look at a variety of things that we could do. To close that gap, um, we are not proposing a one quarter cent hospitality tax that would bring in in around six hundred. Thousand dollars plus to cover that, we're not um, proposing that. The other part is that we're actively discussing sponsors and naming rights. So in in that vein, that could be used for capital. Um, or operating, so to try to help close that gap. The third area would be, um, if we, as we continue to work with our district is to find. Uh, operating money um, within their existing budget or having to have um, certain metals to help cover those costs. So there's a variety of ways that we can. We can do that, I think by taking off the capital maintenance piece off these two new facilities, we're doing a big deal, it's a big deal. So. Basically, anything over five thousand dollars that needs to be replaced would be um, part of the sales tax. So it's really the operation. So that, I would ask Zach to go over the PowerPoint presentation and then Marine will come up and. Uh, talk about how we, how we're going to post and finance the capital and then finally Dan Gossett, we have three attachments. That we are asking you to get to a public vote. Um, on September fifth, that would end up with a, by November fourteenth vote, um, at that point. So. That'd be the three tiers that we're going to do and that we stand for any questions on this important matter. So with that, Zach, please.
Sounds good. Do you want me to share, share my screen? Is that the best way?
Please.
Okay, give me one second here. Y'all can see that now? Or coming up?
Yep, we're on eight floor, Zach.
Oh, all right, sorry. Let's start at the beginning. All right, thank you very much. Um, I'm going to run through this and be happy to answer any questions after, at the end. So we are looking at this combined facility program that uh, Todd gave a summary on. Um, really this facility is focused on a fifty meter pool, aquatic facility, a program pool. Uh, and a turf facility with the pickleball courts. We'll get into the specifics in a second, but from a uh. Higher level, from a site orientation, here's a. The initial concept plan to get a sense of what this facility may look like or how big it's going to be. This is the. Site just south of the Alara Center, um, you can see the existing uh, BMX park on the left there. On the west side and so you get a sense of how how large this facility is, allowing for, you know, growth of the facility expansion. Over time in this base concept as well as uh, you know, additional parking as needed once that is, you know, finalized and determined. When we look at the concept plan, the program for the facility is really, this is the base concept. Uh, that is focused on a hundred and eighty five thousand square foot facility, new construction. Um, on the main level, for the most part, it's a majority of a main level facility, one level with a mezzanine space. And on the main level, as as Todd uh, gave a summary on, focuses on the aquatics area, which is in, on the top of the page. On the north side in light blue, this includes a fifty meter competition pool. Um, is, it also includes a five lane program pool, warm, warm water program pool. So multiple bodies of water, both for competition uh, and warmer water for community needs, swimming, um, swimming lessons. Programming, uh, aquatics, uh, fitness, you know, other things as well that are more effective in warmer water. In addition to the aquatic space, um, the large turf area, seventy five thousand square feet of indoor turf. Um, the turf has been sized based on all the user group feedback to fit uh, the highest needs, high school soccer. High school football, lacrosse, and then youth soccer as well, U eight, six U eight fields, three U nine fields. A U ten field, also the ability to do some modified uh. Uh, softball, baseball practice, not per se full games, but um, infields as well as uh, shortened outfield play. Drop down batting cages um, as well, for those are programmed in within the turf space. Um, on the south side of the turf space is a sprint track. Um, this sprint course is tied to the sports performance training for portion of the program, there's a five thousand square foot. Uh, sports performance train. Room within the facility, um, and this is the space that I think is currently taking place in the old um, Shields. Uh, retail space or the current Shields retail space that would be relocated here, um, if this project moves forward. In addition to the turf and the aquatics, we mentioned the pickleball uh, program right now has eight indoor pickleball space. Uh, eight indoor pickleball courts uh, for a dedicated pickleball space. Along with that, on this main level are all the support amenities for admin, entry lobby, uh, for multi-use. Uh, rooms for rentals, team training, uh, parties, um, other, other uh, support needs that these. Athletic activities would, would desire to have. Uh, the light or darker blue spaces in the middle represent all the various locker rooms needed for high school teams, for general men's, women's. Um, and then family locker rooms as well. On the second level, um, really is focused mainly on spectators and. Um, viewing, both viewing uh, down into the aquatics area and eight hundred uh, seat spectator gallery for the aquatics. Pool as, as well as uh, room for about seven hundred. And twenty spectator viewing seats into the turf area. Um. The other main focus of this level is a large indoor playground space, play yard space, about five thousand square feet. Uh, to, to create a space for families, youth uh, that come during inclement weather, for siblings to hang out and do something while they're. Their older brothers and sisters might be uh, partaking in activities in the facility. Some imagery of what this facility uh, could look like, these are some uh, precedent images of fifty meter pools. Um, it would include all the uh, starting uh, systems, timing systems, LED video boards. Multiple bulkheads to allow flexibility of uh, using the pool in in multiple ways, different programming of the pool simultaneously. In addition, the ability to bring in other community uses as well, we have programmed currently in. In the project, a drop down ninja cross course that could be used uh, when competitive swimming is not happening. Um, or in the warm water uh, pool, also the ability for floatables, other uh, you know, fun. Swimming activities and lessons uh, can be part of the use of this pool. Turf, when we talk about the large indoor turf, these are imagery, images of what that may look like, um. You know, striping will accommodate those sports I mentioned earlier, but also the ability to do things like the drop down batting cages, you know, playing baseball, softball practice. And a lot of those spring sports uh, that may not be able to get outside early, um. In, in the Grand Forks area. And then the ability to stripe as needed, um, there's. An ample amount of turf to provide lots of different sports. And it's just a matter of what's the best use of of the community and of the facility. Um, and then in addition to that, other more recreational activities, um. Youth games, um, this is an image of archery tag, but lots of other uh, inflatables can be used as well in the turf space for. Community and social events. Indoor pickleball, we mentioned that, the eight courts, so a facility similar like this, um, that, you know, would. Allow for the need that is going to be going uh, going away uh, from the Hislop Center. I mentioned indoor sports performance training, here's some precedent images of what that could look like. Um, right now it's about a five thousand square foot space, it could have turf within the weights and training. Uh, but it could also be um, tied to the existing or the turf area within the facility as well. And then finally, that, that indoor playground space on the second level, um, you know, something that. Could be um, pretty large and imaginative at five thousand square feet, there's lots of room to create something uh, very dynamic, very fun. For ages, you know, young, three to four year olds, all the way up to that ten to twelve year old range, um, you know, to, to allow them to do something. Within the facility, you know, when there's, you know, nothing else for them to do or, or when they're trying to um. Coinide their activities with other, other sibling or adult activities going on in the facility. The second part of this um, concept plan, as Todd mentioned, was the request or the discussion of an indoor competitive track. And so this concept uh, shows what that might look like. Um, in, in this view, generally the tre- the overall layout of the facility is the same. The quantity of parking might adjust based on um. The, the needs of the facility and, you know, what shared parking can be. Uh, taken advantage of at the Alara Center, at the BMX course right now. With the indoor uh, competitive track and turf venue, um. The square footage of the facility grows to two hundred and fifty five thousand square feet. On this project again, primarily two hundred and thirty thousand square feet would be on the main level, twenty five thousand square feet on a mezzanine level. All the rest of the facility uh, programming elements are the same in this concept, really just the turf space is what increases and. What's highlighted in red or what the changes would be in this um, concept. If we went with the three hundred meter, six lane indoor track. Um, that would be the defining element that increased the size of the space, you'd still be able to get the soccer, football. Um. Needs that you previously had, there might be a little bit of a shortening of the end zones in this concept. Um, soccer, youth soccer fields would be reduced slightly with the addition of a track. Still lacrosse space and then still ability to do um, infield softball, baseball, drop down batting cages as well. All the other managers would stay the same, we'd add additional storage if this concept um, was implemented. And then the, the last alternate or a additional program element Todd initially mentioned was. The indoor hardcore gymnasium space, um, right now this is kind of a, a alternate or a third. Uh, wish on the list and there would be room to expand either to the west or to the south of the existing facility. For um, that element in the future as desired. And that would be, you know, for a four court. Uh. Four high school court indoor gymnasium space, eight youth courts, but also a lollybilly for four high school volleyball courts, twelve badminton courts. Um, and then spectator space, um, and lounge team areas as well. Some quick imagery of what that might look like, here's just some precedent images, you guys are very familiar with the. The Pollard Center, which is the image on the right, I believe, um. Some quick imagery of what that might look like, here's just some precedent images, you guys are very familiar with the, the Pollard Center, which is the image on the right, I believe, um, and so it'd be a, uh, facility or a space very similar to that. And then here's just some images of that indoor hardcore space that that, um, was planned for a, a future phase down the road. Uh, the final slide over here is on estimated capital costs, so we went around with this revised combined concept, as Todd mentioned, there's was definitely some efficiencies of combining all the indoor athletic sports needs into one facility from a capital cost standpoint. Um, and so here's a breakdown of those costs in red is that base concept facility, uh, really with construction, land acquisition, um, and the design engineering fees estimating around eighty million. Um, and then the blue column is the three hundred meter track, uh, alternate that I just showed you. Uh, that would be an increase of approximately seventeen million to go to that concept in lieu of the, the base indoor turf concept. And then the last, uh, green column represents that hardcore indoor gymnasium, and that would be a sixteen million dollar construction and design, uh, cost increase. We've provided some allowances for soft costs, FF and E as well, which would need to be, uh, worked through, um, as the project moves forward.
I think Council President Sandy is, when Marie comes up here, we've kind of targeted, um, about a hundred million dollars, so when you look at those hard costs there, we've added eighty plus seventeen, which gets us down on that ninety-seven, ninety-eight million. With the sense of those contingencies, you know, uh, we're, we're in the ballpark, that's why we went out to have, um, our local C Mar companies or construction management, management company, architectural firms, so we feel pretty good about, um, Zach's estimates here, because we've had them verified, so that we're not going to have any a sticker shock of being way over or way under, we think we're pretty, pretty tight on this with all that input that we've got from third parties. And so when you look at the eighty and seventeen, that's really what we're targeting with our bond, knowing that there are going to be some additional revenues we're going to seek from naming rights and other places. Um, but that's who we'd look to bond for, to, to build those facilities, look for other assistance along the way, uh, with those things that are above and beyond, so maybe with that, I'd have Marie kind of talk about the financials and at the end talk about the language and if we come back and talk about everything altogether.
Mr. Sturseth, thank you.
Yes, thank you. John, can you bring up, oh, thank you. President Sandy, members of the committee, uh, again, what I want to show here today is just what we've been tasked with and looking at the financing of a facility like this, we have the opportunity of coming close to the maturity of that Alara Center debt. Um, and we're attempting to do this without any increases in the current tax rate. So what we are looking at, um, as Todd just, um, went through with you and looking at those, those upfront costs with the design, uh, construction costs and land acquisitions, uh, which, uh, that ninety-eight point one million. Um, and if you can see there, what, what's all included in that with the ability, uh, as we go forward, uh, and we build up balances to also look at that additional portion with those courts. Uh, and then that timing will just depend on our capacity. But in looking at this, uh, we are proposing an extension of that existing three quarter percent sales tax. And, and looking at that, uh, the current, uh, maturity of the Alara Center debt is December of twenty twenty-nine. Uh, we do have a call date on there, uh, December of twenty twenty-five. Uh, coverage is pretty tight in, in the time period until we get, um, that off the books, so that's pretty what we've been working through on this and what our capacity is to borrow, uh, really, we're, we're looking at, um, anywhere between that ninety million. Uh, we're looking at a thirty year bond estimating six percent, uh, and looking if we use that call date provision and, uh, using our cash and and reserve, um, to pay that down early up to a hundred billion, um, capacity with, with that debt. Uh, timing of construction, of course, will be dependent, uh, upon, um, that borrowing, uh, but looking at, uh, initially, uh, in the fall of twenty twenty-five, uh, when we could, uh, call that debt, next slide. So basically, in looking at our projections, then we have many scenarios, um, and real details, um, thank you to, uh, Mr. Ball, Mike Baxall, uh, for really getting into the weeds and all these different scenarios. Uh, but we are looking at, uh, sales tax to come in at roughly twelve point six million dollars, uh, for that three quarter percent to generate by year twenty thirty, that's based on a three percent, uh, sales tax growth and, and that, uh, we believe is conservative in looking at our history, uh, over, over the years, and to have spoken with Buck Council about, uh, support of that. Uh, the new debt service, depending on, um, how much is borrowed within timing, would be roughly, uh, seven to nine million dollars annually. Uh, and then part of this plan, of course, is your long-term solution for the capital ongoing needs of the Alara Center, as well as we would, um, look to this sales tax for ongoing capital maintenance of the new facility as well. Um, and we would begin starting to set aside in this model, uh, one and a half million annually, starting in twenty thirty for those ongoing needs. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Gossett, it's time to go through, uh, what would be required.
Thank you, Mr. Sturseth, Mr. Gossett.
Yes, thank you, uh, members of the committee, uh, let's kind of go through, first, some of you may not be familiar, we've got a homeroom charter, um, and that was adopted, uh, under the North Dakota Century Code, chapter forty dash one five point one, that allows certain powers to be, uh, granted to the, to the city. Uh, but it had to be voted on by the citizens. And, and in order to implement those powers, you actually then, uh, if it's approved by the, by the citizens through its homeroom charter, uh, vote, then the council has the authority to implement those powers to ordinance, so, uh, think of it in the, in the context of the homeroom charter is, is not quite a constitution, but it, it's similar to that, it grants you that authority, and then you implement it through ordinance, one of the authorities that were, that was approved, it's an article three, uh, sales tax is, is one of those authorities that were, were allowed to board it on, uh, one of which was in subsection P two of article three, it said three quarters and sales tax. Um, that, the, the language right now is directed at, uh, the Alara Center, the construction, uh, for the Alara Center. It does expire as, uh, Mr. Sturseth mentioned, it expires by twenty twenty-nine, although there's some earlier call date in twenty twenty-five. And there are two implementing ordinances, uh, one to impose the, that, uh, sales tax, three quarters and sales tax, and then also an ordinance that, that, uh, calls for that sales tax to expire. Um, and expires at the time when the, the bonds that are issued are satisfied or paid off effectively. There's also, uh, I just wanted to mention, uh, that it's not going to be part of the resolution, but there's also a one quarter cent sales tax also directed at, at the, not sales tax, but a tax for food, beverage and, and lodging. Um, that's a little bit broader as far as the language is concerned, because that, that, uh, quarter cent also allows for use of the proceeds for maintenance, operation, promotion and marketing, unlike, uh, uh, the three quarter, that's only for capital, uh, construction type of uses. Um, and so the, the question is, why do you have to amend, uh, the, uh, powers under article three, it's because the way the, the, uh, three quarters and sales tax and uses of those proceeds is confined to the Alara Center construction, and so, uh, and there's an expiration of, of twenty twenty-nine. How you amend it, uh, the way the statute reads or the way our homeroom charter reads is you have to apply North Dakota Century Code, which is effectively going through the same process as when the charter was officially adopted, you have to put it to a vote. You could do that, you could bring it to a vote either by, uh, initiated type of process, or the council could do it by resolution, that's what's before you tonight. Um, the resolution was part of your package, I'll just briefly go through it. Uh, the recitals where it says whereas, there's a number of them. Um, it talks about that you've been presented information on that, on a health and wellness facilities, uh, the financing of health and wellness facilities as well. Uh, it describes that there's a three quarters and sales tax that's directed at the construction for the Alara Center. Um, it also, uh, these recitals describes that three quarters and sales tax is set to expire. That you've got and, and to consider amending the homeroom charter specifically that, uh, article three, sub paragraph P two, which is really where, where, uh, this would be directed at, and that you've been presented a notice of election in the form of ballot. Um, and then, uh, through the resolution, you are directing that, um, this change, and you could see the, if, if it's voted on or approved through this, uh, vote on November fourteenth, that what's being proposed to, to occur on November fourteenth, what that would mean as far as change to that particular, uh, uh, section of the homeroom charter, which would now expand the uses of, of the three quarters and sales tax to these wellness, health and wellness facilities, describes what those facilities would be used for, and then removes the, uh, the expiration language, uh, in that particular provision of the homeroom charter. The resolution also then, um, as required, uh, sets the, they, uh, put it to a vote and sets the election day from November fourteenth of twenty twenty-three. I understand that that's, uh, a date that works with respect to county will be using, you know, the county for some aspects of the selection as well, particularly the absentee ballot, uh, um, resolution also then sets the hours of voting, um, we're required to do that by our own city ordinances, uh, between seven AM and seven PM on November fourteen, that the Alara Center will be the, uh, the place, polling place, we also have to do that when you have an election, you have to set polling location. Um, the notice of election, uh, is also part of the package, uh, that needs to be published, um, at least uh, for two consecutive weeks, uh, one, one week apart. Um, we're also approving the form of the ballot, and way it sets up is that a, a yes vote is you're approving the use of those proceeds, three quarters and, uh, sale, percent, uh, sales tax proceeds for these health and wellness facilities, in addition to the Alara Center, doesn't remove that language, it would be, uh, uh, both facilities could be used, could use those proceeds, and also to remove, uh, the expiration of the three quarters and sales tax. A no vote would mean you disapprove, uh, of changing the homeroom charter at all. And then you're directing that city auditor take whatever actions are necessary, uh, to conduct the, uh, the vote, uh, we'd also publish, in addition to the notice of election, you publish the resolution as well. Uh, a couple of things I, I want to bring to your attention, one is, we have to provide absentee ballots by our, uh, city ordinances, and that's where we're going to use, uh, the expertise of the county to assist in that effort. There are some procedures we have to follow with respect to military personnel as well, uh, and they're, uh, better suited in, in handling most of the things. I also understand, however, that city personnel will be at the polling place itself and running the election. Couple of things I wanted to bring your attention, the resolution does not call for early voting, uh, you can do that, but it's not quite, uh, that would be an additional expense. If you were going to do that, however, if we did another resolution, and that would have to be issued by September tenth of this year. Uh, if you're going to do early voting, you have to designate that to be before, sixty-four days before the election, I did the math and that, uh, counting back sixty-four days from November fourteenth means if you're going to do early voting, you'd have to have a resolution issued by September tenth. Um, the other thing that is not considered or not provided, uh, are, uh, mail ballots. I, that's different from absentee where they actually mail out the ballots and they return it through mail process. I can advise you that the county did not use that process in the last election. Um, so that was not included in the resolution, so really what you'd be doing is having, uh, absentee ballots and, uh, the election on November fourteenth at the Alars. Be happy to answer any questions, I don't know if I can, now's the time or?
Question, Mr. Gossett? Thought it was pretty straightforward.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Different questions for whoever.
Sure, so. There's, there's three steps that we would be approving tonight, um, and, uh, one is, um, giving notice of the election, our intention to give notice of the election. Um, that's action by the council. We would need to pass a related resolution, that's something that be passed unilaterally by the council, the, the resolution, but then the, uh, amendment to our homeroom charter, that needs to be approved by the voters, that's what would actually be on the ballot.
Correct, and, and the resolution covers all of those aspects, um, which you're doing is by resolution proposing a change to the homeroom charter to allow for the three quarters and sales tax to be used for these health and wellness facilities, and to remove the, uh, uh, the termination of the three quarters and sales tax, that's covered by the resolution itself, and also, uh, then directing that election being conducted on November fourteenth.
So there would just be the one issue on the ballot, the amendment to the, the homeroom charter, um, no early voting unless we designate, now I'm just repeating things that you said, but I'm, I'm wanting to check it out. No early voting unless we designate that by September tenth, if we want that, we need to move that decision forward very soon here. Uh, all election day work would be performed by city staff?
That's my understanding is in talking to, uh, the city finance, that if we are going to enter into an agreement with the county with respect to, because of the, the absentee ballot, uh, there's some unique features in, in that, and they've got some expertise in, in handling that with other elections that they, they conduct.
And, and of course, that means that we would have absentee voting, so you could absentee vote, you could vote on the day of, and those would be the only options.
Correct.
Um, then I, I had some, uh, questions for, for Mr. Sturseth.
No time like the president. Unless somebody else had a question for Mr. Gossett.
No, thank you.
Whoever, if they have a question.
The store said, um, the, uh, the, the spreadsheet you have for financing, um, includes a projected three percent increase on sales tax, and for the last several years, we have surpassed that, I believe. Um, is there any, um, consideration of a multiplier, uh, in relation to sales tax revenue, because we're seeing this as a, not just a facility for our community, but a, a regional facility, uh, we might anticipate that, uh, both with the, the children's museum and with the, these facilities, uh, increased travel, increased retail, et cetera, has that been considered as well?
Oh, Mr. Whoever, President Sandy, members of the committee, um, yes, and I, I think, um, part of why we're doing this is the sustainability in the community, it'll grow with that sales tax, which helps property tax relief, it helps the money for ruins, it, it helps everything. Um, but as far as for bond capacity purposes, I have to be, uh, more conservative on my numbers. Um, so we do believe that three percent is a conservative, but the good thing too, as we work through this, uh, we'll have some time, um, to see how actual collections do come in, um, that may impact that bonding capacity number, or possibly, um, the funds that we can set aside toward, um, offsetting what we need to bond, that we can use up from for capital, so. Um, so we, we do have hopes that this will help our sales tax grow, um, but for bonding purposes, I'm, I'm keeping it conservative.
And that, that careful cautious approach is one of the reasons why you come back each year and, and announce the awards that you're, you're, you're part of this one. Um, and that, that has saved the, the taxpayers money because of that, that approach. Um, uh, I, I should have been paying closer attention, but I thought that we've been acquiring land south of the Alara Center over the last decade, how much more land do we still need to acquire?
Six more acres.
Six more acres.
And that would, uh, I believe, um, what, uh, is appraised value on this, two point one million, that's figured into these numbers.
Thanks. Thanks, Rick.
Good question. Mr. V, yes, sir.
Yeah, just a general, uh, maybe for Todd, Mr. V. What's, maybe I'm a little confused, what is the relationship between the park district and the city about, like, ownership and operations? Uh, obviously, I don't think the park district can do a sales tax, so I'm assuming we're doing that, but how does this work? Together, where's, where's, how did we all partner? Sounds good, Council President Sandy and Council member, I mean, that's a very good question, I think because it's, um, we're going to take ownership of the facilities themselves, similar to the Alara Center, and I think that's why it makes a lot of sense having these all at, at the Alara Center, so the city of Grand Forks will own the, the, the land, or, um, and will own the facilities themselves. Um, I think what the park district has come to us and are willing to help operate and day-to-day maintain those facilities, I suspect that the voters do approve this. Um, we would enter into some sort of joint agreement with the park district on them operating, similar to what we do with other things, whether it's a recycle or they would agree to, um, operate and maintain those facilities, and that, um, they would agree to cover whatever those costs are. Uh, when we talked to Mr. Eliar and, and Chair Scarproude, I think in the order of magnitude, um, because we've talked about this five hundred thousand dollar deficit. Because we've talked about this five hundred thousand dollar deficit. And hopefully we can close that. If you if you read what Fargo's working on a larger with similar facility. They think their goal is within three to five years that they're going to be able to cover all their operating costs. As they get things built up. Right now, we're assuming, you know, this five hundred thousand dollar subsidy or loss. I think in the order of magnitude, number one, we didn't, as Mr. Goss had said, we we didn't, we are not recommending a quarter cent. Restaurant lodging, et cetera, tax, and that would bring in, that brings about six hundred fifty thousand like at the Alera Center. So that's one of the revenue items that goes. The Alera Center budget to help cover the cost they operate the maintenance. We're not proposing that. The other thing we thought about is there is a strong interest in naming rights and sponsorship is that. We can use those funds for either operating maintenance and or. Some of the capital gaps that we may have to complete that facility. That was our. The third thought is with the Park District gets committed to is that. Well, we will, we'll help fund that, you know, whether it's existing funds within their budget or. Worst case, having to add some mills. And if you look at that five hundred thousand, it'd be less than two mills that they would have to. To add into the budget. Certainly, our goal is between now and when this is operating that the mill levy has grown substantially because of all the investments. That we really aggressively sought. I would say the fourth option we talked about and and Mr. Weber talked about this, well. These are facilities that should grow the economy. Grow the sales tax. We're not building. We're not going to build a middle school and we're not going to build an incarcerating facility, which generally is not long term. Grow the economy and and grow the sales tax. So the third option is you do have the one cent sales tax. Eighteen percent of that is dedicated to economic development. And so certainly the city through that sales tax could help subsidize a portion of this too. If you so deemed, if you wanted to do that, certainly we do that every year with arts, defense. Base enhancement, those sorts of things, you would, you could commit to that. So. I think the big thing is when we talk to Mr. Ellier is that we are taking the large load of capital. Maintenance of this off the shoulders of the operation maintenance. And so we don't, they won't have to be concerned about the big time things because anything that really needs to go on. All they're going to do is call the state Grand Forks and we're going to have to find ways to to replace those things. So. I think those are all to be determined. I think the other untapped resource we have is really going out in the region. To get other users to use. We really have focused more on Grand Forks. What we've heard is whether. It's our surrounding community, similar to the Career Impact Academy, where they have seven school districts that are going to be part of that facility. That's going to happen in this facility too, and we really haven't tapped into additional revenue streams like that. I would say the the last thing, maybe I should say the, maybe the fifth area is that we've also talked, it is on the campus, the Alera Center, we do have. OBG three sixty. Hope you grew three sixty. Anyway, the other part is we're trying to do as many end strategies as possible. City could be a part of the operation maintenance of it. Why not? We're doing a lot of other things. Park District has agreed to step up to help out. The third thing we could do is say. With our current Alera Center management group, what could you do to really help us manage and really drive revenue? Through tournaments and all those sorts of things, helping out the various users that want to do it. So I think we could, we're going to have a lot of hands on deck. To manage and operate this facility lots of opportunities. I, you know, first of all, I'm excited about it. When you see the pictures and you see what's happening, it's. venues, it would be great. I have I have concerns about financing. You laid out options. At some point in time, we need to be obviously very clear. And how we're going to do that, how we would address, especially if there would be any shortfalls. Obviously. Capital is the biggest thing you look at now, but the long term cost is operation. And having a plan for how we could, we could do that for the long term that we're able to do that. So. Maybe I wanted to clear one thing up. We talked a little bit about three hundred meter track. That's not in this right now.
It is in that, so that maybe that is in there. So it's the eighty plus the seventeen nine, the seventeen nine is to add a larger. Turf facility with to accommodate the three hundred meter tracks. So that's how you get from the eighty to. Eighty to ninety-eight millions.
And the turf's a full hundred meter. Or a full foot size football field.
Yes. Corners. That's one of the downsides, but. That was the one thing we we were. And certainly we need the voters to approve this. We need to go through final design. And getting in those things, but I just wanted to, generally what we're going into this is would be option one and option two. Upfront, as Marie talked about, I don't think we can incorporate those hard courts into the initial phase of development.
Yeah, to me, that would be what. Our goal should be though. I'd love to see all all of that done. I'd also like to say, I'd like to see an eight. Eight lane track now versus six lane track. You're, I was looking at it, you're you're close. And I don't know what it would take to do that.
There's no, there's no point in having a track at all. You're not going to run track.
You're going to.
We can't run a track. There's no space to throw shot or distance. You're not, you're not going to run an indoor track.
Well, I'll bet there will be running events. Their ability to do that, but I don't know what the 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 curves, I mean, that to me, I'm not for sure what your straight stretches, your curves or whatever is going to be. So the intent of a three hundred meter track is what? Why three hundred?
What versus four hundred? Why not?
I think, certainly I'm not an expert in track, but maybe Zach, you can help it up that this. I think what we heard is. Just for practicing, you know, there's, we're still going to use the Pollard Center and we're going to work on that agreement for for meetings and that's our thing and. What U N D is really pushing is that there'll be meat availability on Fridays and Saturdays. But during the week. You know, using all the U N D needs in that facility is going to be really slight. So I think this is really the. Recreational track. It's going to be for schools, middle school, we'll be here, middle school and high school practice. Maybe some events, but I think the major meets that happen in Grand Forks in the in the region are going to still take place at Pollard. But likely only on a like a Friday or Saturdays, but when that facility will be available. And we did talk about the aid and I think the decision was, well, we may sneak in a six lane tracks. In which facility in a reasonable way and maybe within our budget. Zach, you have no meetings. You're the ones who are drawing the mobiles in this way.
Yeah, I mean, the the track, the six lane track and the size of the facility was really. At the request of the user groups and the public that we met with, the various. Sports communities, high school groups, and it was a very similar sized facility to the the Pollard Center. And I I don't honestly know what sort of meets they're holding at the Pollard Center, but it would be equivalent to that.
Who's going to be running their track?
I think primarily it's going to be our area middle schools and high schools. Training.
Like for gym or are they going to bus them over there for gym?
I think gym, but also more competitive with their teams around training.
Practices, yep, practices. School district's on board with that.
Yes, they've asked for.
School district's going to help pay for the facility.
Yes. Okay.
That track adds twenty percent. Well, I understand that, but it adds twenty percent to the cost. Just add that six lane track is twenty percent. How much is it going to be used? I've never even seen this, that there was a track on there until right now, which is great. So I'm I'm sorry, I'm asking a hard question. And I I don't, maybe it's rhetorical. I don't know. But who's going to use, who's going to use the track for twenty million dollars? To the to the additional cost. I mean, if there's a good answer to that, I mean, no problem.
Well, there's indoor track season and outdoor.
Sure, and so all winter, you know. Probably when cross country is down to whatever, you're running indoor meets all the time. Yeah, Mr. Slonsky.
So when I heard the indoor track, I got excited. Have you ever been to like the Rusted Center in West Fargo? It's track for the parents. So when your kid is practicing, you don't have to just sit there. So I was thinking the track would be for parents.
And Council President Sandy, that's a very good point. So the original plan that you, you recall, there was a second story.
Right.
So really, this is, really, we came down to, okay, if you want a more competitive track. Can we just get rid of the diswalking that we already have? And maybe we can have a multi-dimensional where you could actually have a competitive track or practice at least. And you can do the walking and it can be. Open to the public because right now, you know, we can't just go to the Pollard Center and say, I want to walk the track or. Jog or what have you. So it was a compromise, let's bring it down to the main level and then let's try to broaden the use beyond just a walking jogging track.
I think taking it from three fields to two will really limit us for tournaments. I know we've played some tournaments in Bismarck and they have three fields and and we still have games at ten forty-five at night. I just don't want Grand Forks to miss out on the ability of having indoor soccer tournaments by going with two fields. Storage, seems like there's no storage. And I know every building in this town struggles for storage. I don't want us to build this big, beautiful building and then have to put big, ugly containers on the outside for storage. I don't know if anyone's thought about.
There has been discussion. Can you talk about that discussion point?
Yeah, there's about, I think, six thousand square feet of storage throughout the facility. I didn't really highlight any of that, but the the turf. The aquatics, the pickleball, the performance train center, they all have dedicated storage. And then in the concept that has a three hundred meter track, the storage was increased by another thousand square feet. So, yes, I I will admit that every facility I've ever designed, storage always gets questioned and. And there's never enough storage, but there is six thousand square feet planned for, which we think is a base level. That's a. For this facility.
My last comment was about the pool. I just think as a as a river city and a neighbor of fifteen thousand lakes, it's irresponsible. For us to not have a pool. So I really hope we can. We can have the pool facility to. Existing.
Um, first off, I'd like to say I do support this project. I don't know about the sales tax thing, but I'll leave that up to the voters. So I think it's best that we have a vote on that. My first question is. You know, with the current cost of building and labor and we are in a recession. Is now the best time to do this?
I would say North Dakota and Grand Forks is not in recession. And I would, I would say with inflation. No time better than now to do it. And I think even more than that. Think of all the opportunities, we're we're missing out on quality of life because we don't have these facilities. We have a. We have a lack of competitive facilities in our community. And it's an inability for us to really grow our, grow our economy too. So I think now is the time to do. To move forward with all those reasons.
All right, um, I have more questions. So what would be the operating cost between the two? Different pools, between the fifty meter pool, how much would it cost to operate that versus the twenty-five?
I'm going to have, I know Zach and Steve, we talked about that on operating. I recall on the capital side, it's about seven million dollars more to build the.
Build it.
To build the capital.
Okay.
And then on the operating side. This can be more to operate, however, we were hoping, we haven't worked all the final details, but we should have some more revenue opportunities to. To operate that because we'll have more ability for the community to use that.
You know, has the school board or maybe is the school board and or U N D, are they willing to? Like even sign contracts with us that they are going to commit to using these facilities and and paying us a. I mean, now we have pickleball courts because you indeed, you know, wants to remove the Hislop Center and then the pool. And now a track, I don't really know about that. And we're funding their softball fields. You know, and I still haven't seen any type of an agreement between the city of Grand Forks and that softball field, which you said you would get me. On, you know, how we're going to use it. And and so I'm I'm just confused about. How how all of this is going to work and and play out. And I mean, are they even going to commit to using our facilities or next year is U N D going to come and be like, oh, we're going to build our own pool because we don't. Like the agreement. I would just like to really see. Some commitment from these other entities and so. Has there been any?
We certainly would, Councilmember Slonsky, work on those agreements. We have had meetings where they are committed to all these things. Partly why they're committed is they aren't going to have any alternatives. Lack of alternatives always kind of clarifies things. So I think number one, they are going to use those facilities.
You think they're going to use.
Yes, well.
You hope so.
Yes, I think they will use those facilities. They're going to have to and. And certainly we do need to work on user agreements, whether it's with the school district. Or U N D or the various user groups too that are going to use these facilities. Those are things that we're going to have to work on with, in this case, the Park District and others. And certainly we will work on all those various things. Embedded in that five hundred thousand dollar deficit is our users that are going to use that on the revenue side. And what I'm, what I'm saying is I think there's more users are are going to have to use these facilities from regional high schools that aren't going to have any other facilities. So. I think we're going to cast a wide net of users in this area and we do have to work on user agreements.
Another question that I have is, you know, we keep talking about. What this facility can be used for, you know, like, okay, we can both swim meets. So. How many swim meets are even being held, you know, even in the state of North Dakota, like, like. What are our chances of even bidding on some of these and and getting these? You know, to Grand Forks, how many soccer tournaments, you know, are out there that we can place bits for? Basketball tournaments, I mean. What does that picture really look like?
And embedded in all these numbers is our tournaments that are going to be run. Certainly, right now. Grand Forks at one time had the fortune of having, you know, the best outdoor track facility at Memorial Stadium, right? That went away. Now that's held in Bismarck because they have a better facility. We used to be, Hislop Pool used to be the home of all. Competitions now.
And how many is that though? You say all.
For high school, they have East Region, they have state tournaments, and then there's ongoing like club team type things. And those are. All as as part of this pool of what kind of company competitions and. And all those particulars. So looking at the operating maintenance, there has been a lot of detailed work about what kind of competitions can come to our. Our community. That's why the spectator seat is really important because the other facilities, you can't bring a tournament here unless you have enough. Spectator seats. So I think we've sized it from a spectator perspective. So that we can bring tournaments here and and we're not the group all because we don't have enough seats for spectators.
I guess my one last comment is I would hate. For us to, you know, build these facilities, turn them over to the park port for them to manage and then, you know, have to. Give them more mills or up their mills. And because even though us as a city, we're not raising mills, you know, it's still. Coming out of my pocket, you know, or our citizens' pockets regardless of. If it's going to the park or the city or the county. And so I just want to be really cautious that we're just not going to get in over our heads and. The next thing you know. Everybody's going on just to support these.
I think on on the positive side, if you look at our. The Fargo example, they're building a hundred million dollar plus facility that has some different amenities. They have hockey rings first. They don't have an aquatic center. So there's some variability in that. They're looking at a seventy-five percent from from local government, mainly the Park District, and then twenty-five percent. Private fundraising and they have kind of the who's who of. You know, sponsors, whether it's Sanford and Shields to help with their portion. But that Park District is going to, just for the capital campaign, is raising over eight mills to fund their facility for the Park District. In this case, we're drawing a lever. In existing sales tax that really helps grow our economy and stay within that. And we've done a really good job trying to do that, not add anything. The operation and maintenance space, we do have to work on that. We're a little bit out of our our swimming lane on that. Because we were going to need partners for the user groups of the Park District School to fill those facilities, but. I think the demand is going to be more than what the space will allow ultimately because we don't have it. We have this huge untapped resource. That other communities have in front of us and this makes our community more competitive.
Um, like I said, I do support this. But can we get maybe some of those agreements before we all get on board with this?
I think what you could get is um a a commitment from the various boards that we are gonna partner in these facilities. The details will will come once, if the voters approve that, the more more particular. So we certainly have gotten verbal um thumbs up from all these various groups. And certainly we can get a formal more in with details to come. And hopefully, uh, you know, if the voters do approve this in November, if you still put it on the ballot, um, that the problem, that one of the challenges we'll have is to come back with a bunch of operating agreements with all the various um tenants.
Thank you.
One, Mr. Lee.
Mr. Phelan, I, uh, there was some question about when or what should the timing be? Um, as I best recall, uh, the Lera Center cost was sixty-six million.
If you recall, A at the end.
That that's all cost, the construction cost is what I was thinking of, I think, when I've, and look at that building creating million, then what you, this is gonna cost more than the Lera Center. So as you see it, it never gets cheaper, it only gets more expensive and as we go forward with it. So I I look that, keep that in mind. But the other thing is, is we needed the three quarter percent sales tax for, okay, I will say the eighty million. But I remember when we raised it from forty-nine to sixty-six. Um, I can operate it. And now we're gonna operate this complex, which is actually both smaller, but you're gonna need well, ha- uh, of the three quarter, uh, half of that or a point five percent goes for this and then point two five, right, goes toward the Lera Center.
Roughly, roughly that's the breakdown if you look at that.
Yeah.
And then, you know, we're setting aside, what is it, um, three point seven million for the Lera Center on average. And then we have new debt service will happen in these new facilities. Plus, we would set aside, as Murray said, one point five million, I think, in twenty thirty as kind of starting that trust fund to keep those um facilities up all the time. And as you look out over the the time horizon on the, on my guys' spreadsheet, you know, uh, we do cash flow well as we, as we move forward, because we're gonna have to pay the values, just like we have with the Lera Center. And one of the things we wanna do with the hundred million is we wanna make sure our debt coverage is remains high, well above, I think it's one point three five. Um, a hundred million dollars is a large investment. We wanna make sure we maintain our bond rating as we um do this project too. So we're taking, um, that's why we've been trying to careful on the financing side. We feel good about what Zach's done here on behalf of the consultant group on the cost estimates. Um, so we feel good about that, so they won't have a budget bust. Um, as part of the two, so we try to do as much as we can cross all the K's and D's and I's, knowing that if the voters do approve it, um, the next mo- morning is, uh, you think to yourself, well, there's a lot of work to start doing now. And that would be that moment that we know we have to work on.
So Mr. Phelan is part of process tonight. Um, we're talking about in approving the ballot language, then we also have to have a resolution through men, but when we form your charter. Um, so I think I understand the process. When are we making final determination on what we're gonna build? Because the ballot language doesn't specify that it's going to be hundred and seventy-eight thousand square feet with the seven lanes of swimming and so on.
Yeah, and and I was thinking through all these questions about the timing of of agreements, things like that. What you're doing tonight is approving a proposed change to the Home World Charter to allow the city to have authority to use a certain portion of the three quarters and sales tax for these health wellness facilities. If it passes, it's then incumbent upon the city council to then implement that through an ordinance, which would, you would have to have an ordinance change. In addition, part of the ordinance is right now talk about the allocation of those sales tax policies to the various uh projects. So the the next step, if it gets approved, would be to come forward with those ordinance changes. Come forward with J P agreements, joint powers agreements with the um uh, the park district uh with respect to their management. Um, so there'd be, I think, Mr. Phelan put it well, that what you're doing is putting it into a ballot to uh for the citizens to determine whether the city council would have the authority to use those proceeds.
Yes, but we don't need to decide tonight whether we're gonna build a forty million dollar facility or a hundred million. We don't, we're not deciding that we're building a swimming pool, we're not building a swimming pool. We're deciding on whether we agree that we want to extend the three quarters and sales tax and utilize its proceeds for the Lera Center and for some future facilities that I guess we'll approve at some point in the future.
It's even limited to that. What you're proving is to put it to a vote.
Yeah, right. So, Mr. Phelan, in terms, thank you, Mr. President. In terms of process, when when are we going to, as a council, decide what we think we want to put our money into?
Well, I, we thought it was important, number one, before, you know, you put this on the ballot, that you and in the community at large has some concept of what we're talking about when we're talking about health and wellness uh facilities. And we think we've captured well with what we presented tonight would be the priorities, so the people have an understanding. I think if the voters, as Dan says, approve it, through this, um, between then and when you move forward with, um, you know, changing the ordinances between now and the vote, we'd have some time to really firm up all the commitments. And so then we are, you know, we're off and running if it, if we do have a yes vote, that we're not just waiting for November fourteenth, we have to start. Um, if, um, as the yes vote comes, we would be working in the meantime to get that all placed um for you after the vote.
Vice President, whether, yes, sir.
Thank you, President. Um, we would never be putting something on the ballot saying, you know, how many lockers should we have next to the pickleball court? We're not gonna get into that detail on the ballot. This is just about changing home rule authority to move forward with a project like this. Um, in a recently uh published article, uh, over the last year, uh, Grand Forks outperformed every city in the state in job growth. Twelve hundred jobs added. Um, that's larger in percentage and also the raw number than the nine hundred jobs added in Fargo to the South. We have a tremendous amount of uh great economic news in our community. One of the things that we need to continue that is workforce. And uh, the the two issues tonight that we're, we've been presented with, the children's museum and then this uh facilities uh opportunity, um, are exactly the kinds of things that we need to uh promote workforce development in our community. In fact, one of the things that Ms. Muscavage said was the reason she is working so hard on the children's museum is because she wants her kids to stay in Grand Forks. Um, one of my hopes for for the city's future is that we have more of our graduates from U N D choose this as as the home and and the place to to raise their families. And as such, uh, I'm I'm ready to move, uh, that this council resolve uh in relation to a Grand Forks Health and Wellness Multi-Use Facility and the related three quarter percent uh gross sales tax. Um, I move that we resolve um to approve a special election and with with a proposal to amend the Home World Charter and the other necessary steps.
Second. Motion by Weber, second by O'Sousta. Further questions, I have another question, Mr. Kim. So, uh, the central or the school district has determined that they're going to, I believe, at least study and hopefully fix their swimming pool. Do you know what the length of their, that central swimming pool is? Is it fifty meters?
Seth, Steve, do you recall?
Yes, that that is a six lane, twenty-five yard pool, which is this uh basically the size of the small pool shown on the plan.
So have, do they, have they ever run, run swim meets in that pool? Anybody know?
I think.
We spent a lot of time turning.
I think they, that was their practice pool.
Got it.
And then they competed at, you know, when they had competitions at Hislop. Sure. And right now they Red River Pool, like, must have been a practice, now the teams are combined, but there is a pool at Red River. Here's what kind of the timing, um. If Hislop, who we've been told is gonna get demoed in, we'll say, the first quarter of twenty twenty-five, likely these facilities are not completed until twenty twenty-seven. So there's likely a gap where the uh the competitive swim teams will have to find alternative courses, which suggests is there a way to just fill up the central pool and and um keep it going for a couple of years in between. So I think that's what they're gonna do. So don't spend five million on something where you could just do some patchwork and keep things going. And so I think that's why they hired a firm to take a look at, what do we need to do just to keep the wheels on the bus as we move forward and away from this facility?
Um, well, thank you, Mr. Kim. And I, I for one, I'm really, uh, I'm supportive of this project and and the facilities look great. Um, I think sometimes doubles in the details. Uh, I'm most excited about shoring up the finances for the Lera Center for foreseeable future. Um, and if we can do that and provide some great amenities in our community, I think it would be great. Only the voters will.
President Sandy?
Yes, Mr. Webber.
I'll be brief. I think it's really a discussion. The one thing I've always appreciated about our community is I think we fight above our weight class. And I think we've been doing that for a long time. When Fargo was the only place with a large uh venue such as the Fargo Dome, we, we built the Lera Center um and supported the building of the Ralph Engels Stadium with the university. I think the High School Activities Association has also shown interest in bringing these tournaments to our facilities. Um, we can question how many, um, how often and what not, but if we don't have the facilities to have them, the answer is zero. And so I think getting these facilities, getting them on uh in a busy quarter like South Forty Second, I think we're gonna see further development, whether that's additional hotels, whether that's additional restaurants and everything else in between. And I think it's gonna be an overall positive for our community. And uh, I appreciate the park district and and the city team and and everybody else about thinking bold about some of these investments in our community. Because I think at times we have fallen behind um to Bismarck, to Fargo, to some of these other communities um in the past. So I'm I'm glad to see we're taking that step forward.
Thank you, Mr. Webber. So there's a motion and a second on the floor. Yes, Mr. Kabani?
I was just gonna state everything that uh Mr. Weigle said, so I'd just like to uh add a second to everything he's saying there. And we don't wanna be the community that takes forty or fifty years to do the thing we wanna do. We wanna get it done.
Thank you, Mr. Kabani. And once again, there's a motion and a second on the floor. Anyone else? Comments? Thoughts? There you go. All those in favor, say you kind of saying aye.
Aye.
On the same time. Well, she carries them endlessly. Thank you, everyone. And thank you to, to his staff, Merrick, certainly, although I'm looking on this. Uh, last but not least, on three point eight, uh, the documented categorical categorical exclusion project eight three thirty-eight, Forty Second Street Road, great separation process, environmental document. Mr. Grass, what do you?
Thank you, Councilmember, President Sandy, members of the committee. Uh, the last time that we talked about this project was basically a year ago, I think, September twenty twenty-two. At that time, um, we presented some alternatives to the city council. The direction we got from the city council was that they wanted to continue to carry those five alternatives forward and do a more detailed review uh relative to the geometry and impacts, et cetera, et cetera. And so that's, that's uh basically been going on in the last year that the uh prior analyses have have been updated based on uh requirements and and desires by the N S F uh federal agencies and and state. So that information is is now uh incomplete, and it actually, uh, going through some of those details does, does impact uh what are perceived to be some of the best alternative, best alternative. Uh, the other thing that's happened there, and again, just recently, is we did get uh determination from Federal Highway, they called it a a de minimis determination for the golf course. What that means is that they looked at the proposed alternatives and the impacts to the golf course. And the paraphrasing that essentially, I think, they find that those are the mitigation techniques are acceptable. Don't detract from the, from the main uh delivery or use of that uh of that facility. That's been important because we've been trying to figure out how Federal Highway is gonna land on that particular subject. Um, one of the other items that we've uh determined here recently uh is really uh some, some input from the North Dakota D O T that the D O T themselves ran these alternatives through their own internal departments. And the departments have essentially voted or provided impact uh uh input relative to what they think are the best alternatives. That's really important because not only, you know, they, they bring the experience that they've got as a team and as a department uh to the process, which includes a lot of nuances that that don't really always come out during the, during, during the analysis uh and things of uh as staff that that we haven't been exposed to. So we're relying quite a bit on on some of their inputs. The other uh big one, obviously, was the, was the award of the grant. And the award of the grant, uh, uh, it's really got two other significant impacts with the grant. One is obviously the money. We've got thirty million dollar uh uh grant uh opportunity there uh through the B N S F applications. But the other one is because of the complexity of coordinating the different federal agencies of that grant, is the D O T was actually planning to be the one that's gonna take over the project uh and and see it through for for the design and all, all of those types of activities. Up until now, it's been a locally led project. We paid for the, 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 the cost of the environmental analyses. But the grant kind of changes who's gonna be the lead agency. Again, that's important too. So going back to the D O T and and some of the the input we had there, the the vote call, we'll call it uh on on their evaluation of alternatives. They've really come up, uh, I think, help, help guide us to an alternative that that allows uh both the uh golf course to stay operational, I think it allows the gas station to be operational. And and but still does allow, if we, if it's desired by all parties to go through uh and do some sort of a buyout relative to specifically the gas station. But it also, uh, there's also properties to be acquired, you know, on the north side of the railroad tracks also. And so they, they, when they, when they, uh, they, they brought all those analyses uh back into uh into their votes. Again, you're gonna see a little bit later on uh tonight, but essentially that, I think, leaves all the doors open. Uh, uh, good options there that that keeps everything operating should, should it be desired. Our job, both tonight and next week, really, is city council is, is we need to uh just uh pick a desired alternative uh to move forward. That's gonna then go to the D O T. They're gonna incorporate that with with all their other inputs and and they will ultimately make a final selection. Uh, the good thing with the D O T is, is that they'll then take that project. Uh, they'll start the design, they'll, they'll bring in the, the knowledge they have on the federal uh federal processes that that involves and the design, utility relocates, property acquisitions, all those types of things. The federal process will be applied to this uh project relative to, you know, all of those different components. Their experience with those uh items, they've done this throughout the state on, on, on different projects, especially as they enhance the some of those highways out, out west. So without spilling the beans anymore, uh, the thing to watch for in your staff report, the, the staff is recommending uh the original alternative B one. But we're also uh recommending uh that that we would send to the D O T their consideration of enhancing B one with a three quarter access on Demers Avenue. What that is, is, is it means that instead of just a right in and right out, you go right in, right out and a left in. But it, what it eliminates is the left out, those are the ones that are usually problematic, creating uh relative to creating accidents. The other uh enhancement that we'd like to bring to the table under that would be to bring a front end rule, again, to to connect the gas station up to uh Forty Second Street. So it's, it's a base B one. You'll see B one listed twice. One is the base B one that really went through the environmental uh alternative process. And then some of the enhancements that that staff is recommending to be added to that uh for consideration by the D O T. With that, that's kind of my front end uh introduction uh on on the subject matter. Uh, following me will be uh Scott Midow. He's, he's from uh K L J. They're, they're the consultant that have really been uh shepherding this thing for the last number of years, doing the actual technical analysis. And then uh in addition, we'll bring uh Mr. David Cranko up to do some of the wrap up, and then we'll, we'll be available to answer any questions. So they'll get into more detail of what I gave you as, as a real product.
Thanks, Al. Uh, President Sandy, members of the committee. Uh, I'll power it pretty well. I guess I'll get more into details as we go here through this Forty Second Street Underpass project. If you could go to the next slide, please. If you could go to the next slide, please. So to start things out, why are we here? Um, what's the purpose needed in this project? Biggest thing is we want to improve public safety, meet the long-term goals. This, this, this project has been in your long-term plan for several years now. Um, ultimately, we want a great separation. You know, not only to improve safety mobility for people, but we also want to improve the reliability of emergency service response times. Now, that's a big, big part of this project as well. Just a couple of quick stats on that. Today, as it sits right now, there's two hundred and sixty-one vehicle hours of delay due to trains along with that intersection. If nothing is done, that number increased to four hundred and twenty-five in the year twenty forty-five. Next slide, please. So just wanna kind of quick go through a timeline for this project. Um, this is since nineteen ninety-eight. Anything before that kind of predates a lot of us here. So um, that's when a lot of it started with uh, study that was University Avenue. Moving since then, it's been looked at multiple times, but I've always been put on hold because of lack of funding. This project has never picked up speed of funding. And so where we're at now is, um, you know, we're picking off of the twenty fourteen categorical exclusion left off. There was two alternatives looked at in that one. This current one has five alternatives. What we did is we went out and we took more topographic survey. There's been more developments. Um, we, we, we've looked at the alternatives that have been previously analyzed. We went through more of a design process. We took this design further than it has been taken before. We did that to help identify any impacts that will be taken or be observed with the project and to develop any mitigation efforts that we can. Next slide, please. So as Mel, as Al mentioned, you know, what's changed are the, are the big ones. Um, thirty million dollars from reconnecting or, uh, railroad crossing elimination grant. That was a big one. Uh, we worked with BNSF and DOT to submit grant applications. Um, we also re- received feedback from any DOT regarding their preferred alternative input. And I'll go through kind of the polls that they, they submitted to us on that. And then the big one that we've been working on lately is the section four F de minimis impact. Um, because of the funding that we're using through FHWA, the golf course is a public space for, uh, recreation. Because of that, it is protected under section four F. With every alternative, we have varying levels of impacts to that golf course, which requires us to go through and a process to make sure that at the end of the project, we're not removing the use of that, that section four property. So what we've done is we've worked with U N D as the owner of the golf course to go through all the alternatives, all the impacts. We then went to Federal Highway explained all of that. Now, they're okay with it. They're supportive of the project. But Federal Highway came back and says, yes, we will accept this being a de minimis impact contingent on any public comment. So as of last week on August twenty-fourth, we had a fifteen-day comment period that was open for the public to receive any comments regarding the impacts to the golf course and any of our mitigation procedures. We did receive three comments on that. Nothing is shattering. Um, our last step in that, that we're moving forward with, with the DOT and Fed Highway is to finalize that process with an executable document that is basically makes all parties aware of what is happening and the mitigation efforts. Next slide, please.
Can we tell the end for questions?
Knock yourself out.
Um, besides U N D, have we talked to any of the other people that are around there whose properties this may affect?
We have had conversations with, uh, U N D Aerospace and the gas station as well.
All right. Have you asked them which one they prefer? Both of those parties?
We have not directly asked them their preference at this time.
Thank you.
They did have the opportunity to publicly comment during our public input meeting held in twenty twenty-one and through this recent section four F.
Is that announced? Cause I guess I didn't know about that.
It was. It was. There was a, a press release in the Grand Forks Herald. It was published on the DOT's website, along with any, uh, subscribers to them. We got an email blast and it was published on the City of Grand Forks.
Did you get ahold of all the landowners that will be affected? And did you let them know about the comment period?
We did not specifically do that.
I think that would have been a nice thing to them.
You have a question?
You can continue.
Okay. Uh, so through the process, we have been working with, with the three project stakeholders. U N D as a section four property, the owner of the golf course. BNSF is lines we have to go under and the North Dakota DOT. So U N D, like I said, we've been coordinated with them on impacts to that golf course and mitigation efforts. They're supportive of the project. Um, and they're in favor of all the impacts or the mitigation efforts that we've proposed so far. Um, BNSF reached out to us, you know, we, we engaged them when we first started this to make sure that they were aware of the project. We got any of their design standards. Um, this is a top priority for BNSF. This is their top priority grade separation of Dakota. Um, they helped us spearhead some of the grant applications along with DOT. They did, um, make some requests. It's pretty standard for DOT grade separations that we are going to accommodate a future track. We won't be adding that track. But with the infrastructure that's in, that we're proposing, we want to make sure that we can accommodate a future track with theirs in the future. Um, and then North Dakota DOT, they're more of a partner than a stakeholder. You know, we're following their process. They're providing funding. Uh, so we're going through their environmental process. And then they are also making sure that we don't jeopardize, jeopardize any interstate operations with this project with the I twenty-nine ramps right there at Demers. They don't want any packages onto I twenty-nine because of this project. Next slide, please. Um, as I mentioned, and as Al mentioned, um, BNSF and DOT really helped us with the grant application process. We submitted three grant applications, the railroad crossing elimination grant, which was awarded up to thirty million dollars. The other two that were submitted is the Consolidated Rail Infrastructure and Safety Improvements and the Reconnecting Communities Pilot Program. Uh, that last grant, we know we were unsuccessful on, but the Christie grant, we are still waiting to find out. Um, I guess just a big thanks to them for really spearheading this with BNSF being a supporting member of this that really helped with that application process along. Next slide, please. So with the funding of this, um, there's a lot of different funding sources. And this is what was submitted with the grant application. As you'll see in the bottom, it shows sixty million dollars is what was used. That is the highest cost of all the alternatives. Um, depending on the alternative selected, that cost will vary, but what will remain fairly consistent is that column on the right, that percentage breakdown of the funding sources. And so I guess that's what I really want to draw attention to on this side is that percent allocation. That's what everyone has it now was responsible for. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, this has been going on for decades now. Um, in all, thirteen alternatives have been analyzed. That includes nine underpass alternatives and four overpass alternatives. We have eliminated, will be eight of those alternatives forward for various reasons. That includes, uh, excessive property impacts, steep grades, um, you know, negative geometry, negative impacts on the regional interstate trans- transportation system, as I mentioned from DOT. And then impacts in James Ray Drive. As part of this process, we, we took a look at an overpass alternative again. Um, and what we found is that depending on the grades that we use to get up and over the, the railroad and the vertical current length, the fill heights required a James Ray driver anywhere between six feet and twenty. And so with that level of impact, those fill heights would impact James Ray Drive, potentially close it. Um, but at a minimum would impact the access to that, to James Ray Drive, the parking lots at U N D and the parking of the U N D buildings right there. So where we're at now is we've whittled it down to five alternatives we're currently carrying forward. Next slide, please. So these are the current five alternatives. Um, we're gonna go through these individually. The one thing I'd like to point out on this is they're broken out into B alternatives and C alternatives. The B alternatives keep Demers and the railroad tracks at the current elevation and pass Forty Second Street under both of those facilities. The C alternatives lower both Forty Second and Demers and depress that entire intersection and pass Forty Second Street under the railroad tracks. So with that, we can dive in. Uh, next slide, please. So alternative B one is the first alternative. This is, um, basically keeps Forty Second and Demers on the existing alignments and connects them via, uh, kind of a jug handle intersection. As I mentioned, Forty Second will pass under both Demers and the railroad tracks. This is the preferred alternative from the DOT is to receive the votes from the different divisions. Um, with this, it keeps the gas station in its current location. And it revises the access from full access to a right in and right out. Um, previously, I mentioned, uh, interstate operations and how this project could affect it. So right now, with this alternative B one, the spacing between the interchange ramps and that full access intersection of the jug handle, that spacing has increased from eight hundred feet to thirteen hundred feet. That thirteen hundred feet, if you refer to the DOT Traffic Operations Annual, that's the minimum length that they like to see for full access intersection away from an interchange ramp. Next slide, please. So as Al mentioned, there is a couple of design considerations we could look at with this. Um, first being to, to try and maintain full access to the gas station, not from Demers but to Forty Second, we could look at adding a package road. You know, south of the gas station and tying down and then creating a full access on the Forty Second Street at that jug handle intersection. The other thing that this alternative would allow for is, um, it's, it's got the spacing between the full access intersection and the gas station to allow for a three-quarter access to the gas station. So as Al mentioned, that would allow for a left in, a right in, and a right out. It would just restrict anyone from the gas station wanting to go west. That movement would be prohibited. Next slide, please.
Good question. Yeah. On that one, if you were looking at, if you, if you can't take a left going now, can you go down and do, you probably couldn't do a U-turn and come back to the west?
So depending on the design vehicle, if I'm just in a car, I could, most likely I could pull up a U-turn. I believe right now, per Grand Forks ordinance, U-turns are not permitted at signalized intersections. You all have the authority to revise that, so I don't see that being a big deal. Um, but with this, it's a T-intersection right now. And so if we were to allow for a U-turn, we'd have to look at incorporating a left turn lane for that U-turn. And then depending on the design vehicle we used, we may have to put some sort of ball out on the north side of the roadway to accommodate that U-turn, especially if large trucks or vans are gonna use that. Did that cover your?
Yeah.
Alright. Um, so, you know, as I mentioned, we are looking at all the impacts of the golf course mitigation. We did work with a landscape or golf course architect to review all of the impacts we have and come up with mitigation alternatives. This is the mitigation alternative we have for alternative B one. Next slide, please. Moving to alternative B two, um, this alignment or this alternative shifts the alignment of Forty Second Street.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Since your recommendation is B one and staff's recommendation is B one, do we need to go through all the rest of them?
If you don't want to, I guess.
Do you guys wanna see all the rest of them? We've all seen them a dozen times. So.
Yeah.
I'm not the person, and you're doing a great job.
Oh, I, no, I won't, uh, I won't argue that.
Yeah. You have a question about? Yeah. I, I think maybe when I could expedite going through them all, but I do think.
I don't mind going through them. I'm just doing, uh, sure.
I personally, you know, understand where the, oh, the recommendation is.
You're right.
Oops. I'm sorry. I can personally understand where the recommendation is coming from. My biggest concern with the recommendation is just impact of golf courses, the largest impact. Even though you can, doesn't mean you should. And that would be the only thing that, that I see in. I know we gotta make a decision here, so that has to come forward. Um, I wish, and I know you can't do that. I wish you could make that loophole kind of a a hazard, and you could push it, that you could put the ball over the top or the golf ball over the top. I need the green where it is. That ain't gonna happen, but it does have the least impact. Could you do create? It is pretty substantial the impact of golf.
And I guess just to reiterate, the important thing with that is we have gotten concurrence from Bed Highway and DOT, the property owner, that the impacts are mitigable and we wouldn't have to go through any further analysis with that. Um, I can breeze through the rest of these if you guys want to.
I have a question on, so when we go cut into the golf courts, do we have to pay for any of that land around there, even like with, what is that, U N D Aerospace? I don't know.
Yep. So any property outside of city-owned right of way would need to be purchased right away. So.
So we have to buy this golf court, this chunk of golf course from U N D? I heard it was gifted to them and they didn't pay anything for it. And they wanted to shut down that golf course. And now it's open. And now they're gonna charge the city after we've funded their softball field and we're gonna build them a swimming pool.
Um, also, I have concerns about you know, we're taking into consideration basically the University of North Dakota and the railway, but not our small business owner, who I I would be really upset if I owned that gas station. And now the alternative B one is proposing that you can only take a right in and a right out up there. And, um, you know, you talk about building a frontage road. I personally use that gas station and I do a left in and a left out every time I use it because it is a gas station right there by the interstate. And so if I fill up at that gas station, I expect to be able to jump right on the interstate or even, you know, come off the interstate quickly, fill up and continue on my journey. And now I won't be able to do that at one of the gas stations that I use. I'm assuming that other citizens won't do that. And now we are basically punishing this small business owner for where his gas station has been located for forty-eight years. And, um, I mean, would the city like maybe compensate, compensate that? I mean, all these people in industrial park, that's the closest gas station also. So, um, probably one of the closest restaurants where they, or not restaurants, I think they sell pizza or breakfast, breakfast bagels, but all these people, you know, utilize that gas station. And so, and so I do have a lot of concerns about, I guess, one, giving money to U N D at all. And two, what we're doing to our small business owner. And I'm very disappointed that you did not reach out to him, but you sat there and reached out to the rails people and U N D and didn't even consider him.
So with all alternatives that keep the gas station in place, um, as it currently sits, all alternatives will cause that from a full access to a right in. Um, that is based on traffic operations. That's also in conjunction with North Dakota Department of Transportation, right? That is their state highway right there.
I just think that we're not treating him very nicely.
And, and that's why we did look at that, those design considerations for alternative B one, is how we can get full access to go north, south, east, or west.
Maybe we could get the land donated from U N D and then we could just buy him out and then maybe everybody would be happy.
Um, I, I think as Al mentioned, bio isn't precluded from anything, but, um, that would have to go through the process. As far as the, the payment to U N D and how they acquire that land, I, I'm not familiar with that.
Mary, did you have a, do you have a comment or a question?
Yeah, well, I mean, ultimately, we're gonna ask for a decision to be brought forward. We're gonna have to partner because we're gonna have to go to DOT, whether the gas station owner likes it or not. It's not gonna be the city's decision whether that stays there. If you want to stop and get gas at that gas station, if it's bought, I'm certainly gonna be able to stop there in the middle of this, so. I think the, the Dusterhoff family and Scott are, are gonna be great partners on this. I think we'll come to a, a positive solution again. These are our, we'll stick here, um, at the beginning. Um, but the other alternatives do nothing. So we can certainly opt for that. But I think, uh, that leaves thirty million on the table. We've been talking about doing this for thirty years still.
I do agree that something needs to be done. I'm just saying that, you know, I'm, I don't want to buy anything from U N D at all. Not at all.
Mr. Member, I think of U N D, I know you're councilmember, Salsky, you're fired up about U N D tonight. So I think the important part, I think what U N D wants in this, because they, they, they're gonna be a good partner. Uh, they're gonna wanna have a golf course put back to, uh, so they can continue, um, to golf. So I don't think it's gonna be an issue of, uh, that issue. I think the major investment is to put the golf course back to be needed to be so. But we'll, we'll, um, press upon them your concern about buying right away. Um, but we do, if we disrupt something, we do have to put it back together.
I think that they should don't. To us.
Ms. Long, do you have a question?
Can we request that you and maybe Mr. Beal and have a meeting with the Dusterhoff family? I think they're feeling a little left out and they deserve some attention.
Yes. I think that's, that's a really good point. And, and, uh, I certainly, uh, this is ultimately, you're gonna make a concept decision to go to DOT. And, uh, you may make a choice, right? And we always have all these options. Well, you know why something hasn't been done? Cause it's hard. And so what we've done over time, we've gotten things. And so what we've done over time, we've gotten things to get worse and worse and worse. Because we weren't here fifty years ago. When, um, a gas station was allowed to go right there. And now we're trying to mitigate the issue. And it's hard to understand the geometry of, why can't you just sink the intersection right there and make everything go away? Well, it doesn't work. That way, so we certainly will do that. You should also know, um. Uh, the Duster off family, they have hired an attorney. Um, my, my guess is that they'll see out their best interests, uh, to the end. And so, um, as we work through tonight, we will be working through with Mr. Costa because they do have legal. Um, they do have hired an attorney in this matter, so it's hard for city staff just to engage once a party. Um, hires a lawyer and then it has to go from a trade to a trade. So. Again, we all have to be careful on how we engage, especially when entities have hired.
So one quick question.
Yeah.
Under A one, can we go back, John? Under this scenario. What pro- what property north of forty second needs to be purchased?
North of Demers.
I'm sorry, yes.
So, um, you can see the blue line that kind of is. In the railroad, that would be a shoe fly. And so I believe you and the aerospace owns that northeast quadrant and then you and the owns the northwest quadrant. For this, right here, we would need at least temporary easement from those two entities to construct the the shoe fly. That's basically a bypass for the railroad so it can maintain operations. And then there would be some grading limits that we would have just from the grade change in the forty second that would require some land purchase from both sides as well. And those, those purchases, the, the cost that is currently built into the estimates.
So everyone knows my employer owns that triangle. The northwest corner. If, if the DOT ends up purchasing it, I'm not gonna get a nickel. It's not gonna change my life whatsoever. I figure I'm better to disclose that. So if we do move this one. Yes, Mr. Vane.
With all these, what's the construction timeline? Because it's gonna be hugely disruptive. And and some of them must have better constructability timelines than others.
So, um. Anytime you can close anything down with traffic, it's quicker construction. So anytime we're keeping forty second on alignment. It's most likely going to increase, or I'm sorry, decrease the time needed for construction. Net the cost of detours for for the users of the roadway. Um, at a minimum, it would be a two-year project. Depending on, you know, as we dive into final design and then look at the details, it could be, could be three, but you're, you're right. There's a lot going on in this little area.
Mr. Webber.
Um, thank you, thank you, President Sandy. Um, I don't mean to neglect the, the interests of the business owner. Or or the golf course, but my, my main concerns here are the motorists using this area and the Grand Forks taxpayers. In relation to the, uh, the cost breakout, it's listed on a slide seven. I'm looking for some clarification. There's, uh, you, I, I think I heard you say that whatever the amount is, the city's cost would be twenty eight percent. Is, is that correct? Because, um, we've, we've got between fifty to sixty million dollars in, in options here. Does that ten million dollars, is that borne by the city? Um, or will the city share always be of that at, uh, twenty eight percent?
Um, I might refer to David. That one. Sorry, can you please repeat the question?
Sure, um.
In this slide.
Right here. So here it's listing the city shares twenty eight percent. Twenty eight percent of, uh, of sixty thousand is what sixteen, uh, sixteen point eight. If we go with the fifty, the fifty million dollar option. Um, uh, twenty eight percent would be fourteen million. So is the difference between the. The cheapest and the most expensive option for city taxpayers, is the difference two point eight million? Or is it the? The twelve million, uh, the, the, the ten million?
President Sandy and Vice President Webber, um, in my conversations with staff from the DOT on this entire complicated, uh, financing. Different, all sorts of different funding mechanisms that we have in here. The guidance that I've gotten from them is the percentage that was used in the application, consider that being relatively constant. Now, the grant, the grant amount, that thirty million, that was fifty percent. Cost share up to that thirty million. So if that cost, that total project cost comes down. That total share also, that thirty million comes down with it as well. So because of that, it's, it's. Best to keep in mind that our local share will likely be that twenty eight percent. If we go above that sixty million. Then we end up having to look at other means, potentially either through state funding or the end or additional local funding. To make up that difference. It's just like when we end up doing other federal aid projects where. We have our, our cost participation maintenance agreement, we end up blocking in how much federal dollars we have. And if it ends up going over, we end up paying additional local for it. In this case, considering that there are. Uh, other funding partners, hopefully that funding amount would increase and it wouldn't be a hundred percent on the city if, uh, if the other costs exceeded that sixty million.
Great, thank you. That's, that's the information I needed. And you had asked President Sandy if we wanted to go through all of the options or not. Um, we have a, a clear recommendation. But one of my concerns about going with one of the more expensive options. Was that that ten million dollars was gonna be entirely borne by the city. Instead, if we go with one of the least expensive options. What I'm hearing from you is that we're actually. Kind of leaving some federal money on the table instead of getting thirty million in federal funds, we could get as little as twenty five million in federal funds.
Uh, the other piece to consider on that as well is that the costs that are included in the cost estimate are twenty twenty two dollars. So those values will likely increase over time due to inflation.
Yeah, that kind of changes it. Okay, um, what I was hoping for was the most elegant solution, which seems to be, um, the, the fifth option, that the simple straight lower both of them. Uh, the, the problem with that. From my perspective was that it was the most expensive. But are there engineering problems with that as well? Can you, could you discuss those quickly briefly?
Um, so are you referring to the? We go to slide seven.
Yeah. C one, yeah.
So engineering wise, there's, there's not a lot of difficulties. The one thing with this one is it does, um, assume a, a buyout relocation to gas station. With that, because we're depressing that entire intersection and just so the depth we need to go. To get back up to meet the existing ground where that driveway is, we just can't get there in time without creating extremely steep grades.
And that's, that's the main problem, is the, the loss of a gas station.
It's the main problem. There's also some considerations of with the B alternatives, that just passes forty second street under, and so. All the stormwater in this area is gonna have to be pumped out with a lift station. So if we would have a power outage or a very severe rain event, um, and that intersection flooded, if it's just a B alternative with forty second going under. That just closes forty second for that a lot, amount of time. With this alternative, um, you could close the entire intersection. That also goes true with snow drifting. Um, this one also includes some retaining walls along the railroad, but. It, it's feasible, um, but yeah, those are some of the downfalls.
So it's water in the form of water, liquid water or, or snow, don't drift. Thanks.
She means, uh.
Never, I, I never even thought about this till here recently, but. Have we ever done a wind tunnel? Analysis to see how much snow is actually gonna collect in this, at this location. Um, I'm a little concerned because it's pretty wide open and, and, uh, just like you talked about with this last option, I like it, but I'm concerned about. The impacts that you have with snow. And with the effects, I know, uh, was it nineteenth Avenue in Fargo where they've had deaths in there because of snow? Um, and is this also potential?
We have not gone through and looked at snow drifting amounts. Um, MinDOT and the National Department of DOT do have some criteria that you can look at and it's based on. You know, the prevailing wind directions, the amount of snow, what the fetch distance those is of those winds, uh. I'm sure we could. Look at something. I don't know how conclusive the results for sure would be in this scenario with buildings and everything everywhere.
I think it's an issue though.
We don't, we have not gone through that exercise.
So, I'm sorry. If, if you're, if someone's gonna have a discussion with the Duster Ops. And they're open to a buyout. And alternative C one takes into consideration the potential for a buyout. Granted, I know there's a lot of problems and still problems, but. This certainly would be much more elegant than. Doing a jug handle, jug or not, whatever. And so. Are we, are we making? Pressurists no longer here. I know he wants it differently, one or another, but. Do we have to decide? I mean, can it be, like, for me, my, my number one alternative is C one if the Duster Ops and we could come to, to, uh. Uh, agreement on, on terms of a buyout. And if not, then certainly I would go to, uh, B one. Flip with the. You know, back. Back growth. That's what, so if, if you want me to rank them in order, that's where I am.
I agree with you. That one just looks a lot cleaner, not so wonky. Yeah.
I guess. I will say with this one, as I mentioned, uh, anytime we keep the roads on the existing alignment, basically requires a shutdown of that intersection. And so with this alternative. This intersection most likely will be shut down for, I would say, at least two years.
Yep. So. The rest of this.
Yeah, Mr. Grant.
I'm, I'm trying, can you, uh, forward ahead on, on some of these slides? I think we should take a, a quick peek at the timeline when we get to that one. A second last. There you go. There, uh, so a couple of other considerations to go along with this thing is if, if we make that, that selection, then. Um, it really boils down to the property owner trying to decide when they wanna buy it or if they wanna push us into, uh, rebuilding a new gas station in another location. And I think what, what we saw from the DOT was for those people that have gone through that process in Fargo. They've said, basically avoid that process at all costs. Uh, I'll mention that that alternative right now in twenty twenty two dollars was about sixty million dollars. So you could, you can assume that. The additional costs, any additional costs above that, feds have gotten very, very good at cost sharing on the way down, limiting themselves on the way out. And so, um, again, if you're, if you're there in twenty twenty two dollars and we start moving into construction into. Twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight, twenty nine, every one of those years adds about, you know, four percent, five percent of the cost of the project. That, that red, uh, star in there talks about, uh, you know, the timeline that we've got right now, it's gonna be about three years to go through the, the design. And the, uh, utility relocates, et cetera. So we're looking at. At, uh, you know, a, a bit of their late twenty twenty three, twenty seven. Or twenty six, twenty seven with a two-year construction window. Our, uh, our grant requires, uh, basically runs out in November of twenty twenty nine. That's our last. Ability to submit for reimbursement. The, uh, the buyout, uh, complication, the full buyout complication with potential for relocations, probably gonna add sixty eighteen months, uh, to our timeline. So not only are we, um. Probabilistic going to run out of our, our, our available grant window, um. But also have the additional costs of, of time. Again, if you're bidding in twenty twenty eight. Versus twenty twenty six or twenty twenty seven, again, you've got, you've got the inflation of. Onto you there. So those are very big considerations. Uh, again, I think the alternative that we have right now still allows the, uh, the buyout, uh, discussion and alternative, but it does force the city into a single option. That really, uh. Puts a negotiating power in power. Uh, property.
Um, so currently in all the estimates for alternatives, B three and C one, we do have costs included to. Buy out the gas station. We have that included as about estimated right now at about six and a half million dollars. Um, so even if you did go with B one, which I believe is the cheapest alternative. It might still be cheaper if that wasn't.
Hmm. Okay, we should move B one forward. The, uh. So you, you wanna motion in a second to select our alternative tonight, right, Mr. Crickell?
Ultimately, what we're looking for tonight is approval of the environmental documents. Concurrent in the product concepts as proposed. Selection of for alternative and then, uh, adding in those additional comments of. Adding in the baggage road. Uh, can you, can you go to that slide on B one that, uh, that showed that baggage road there?
And then the.
And then the three, yep, the three quarter intersection. So that way then you would have the right in. The left into, into the gas station, the right out leaving the gas station. And then you'd have that baggage road, which would provide access to that signalized intersection there at forty second. And then getting traffic back to the interstate, as you mentioned earlier, that concern. So then you'd still kind of maintain. The ability for traffic to make all movements back and forth.
And what part do we design in the ability to do a U-turn? At that intersection. Where you merge.
Ultimately, when it comes to the design, that would like to be done by the DOT, we would end up providing our recommendation.
I think we would add that, I, I would add that to the recommendation.
Adding in a left turn lane and, uh.
You need a little to do a U-turn. Assuming, assuming that we don't negotiate a buy.
Can we, can we see a breakdown on the cost?
Uh, can you pull up the staff report? We should have a breakdown of the staff report. Within the attachments.
Does that have like the buyout for the U N D properties for buying?
No.
Do you know, is that, is, do we know what that is? Because you have a number on.
Yeah, so.
The gas station.
Um, if you look at proposed primitive right of way. It'd be one of the last line items on the second page. That's a price cracker. And so any.
What is that?
Um, currently we are showing. I'm sorry, it's five dollars a square foot is what we're, we're using.
For, for that U N D stuff?
That's for all right away that we're.
Oh, almost that. And then how? How many square feet would we need to buy, um, from, I guess, the golf course and then? Whatever. How much square footage do we need to buy from the university?
We have that broken out. We don't have that number right off the top of my head, but that's something we can still get.
What do you have it broken into?
Uh, we have that.
Quadrants?
What's that?
We get like quadrants, like we need to buy.
We haven't broken out, um, for all landowners, then just you and me. We have to do that as part of the section for that process for the golf course.
So that's separate than like aerospace center?
And we have, we, we have it per parcel. We can easily have a better intersection.
Alright, can you?
Keep in mind, uh, states buy it from themselves and it's.
So they'll, the state will buy it?
Well, DOT, I mean, that property is owned by state owners, the state of North Dakota, so DOT negotiates, they're negotiating itself, so. Does that make sense?
So we're gonna use part of the thirty million dollars that we were awarded to. Build this, like part of that actual chunk of money to acquire. Land from the same entity and I, I'm confused about that.
I think the negotiations when the states wanna get the project done, they're negotiating purchase with themselves essentially, so it's gonna make the process one straight line.
Okay.
But Sandy, I think what complicates this is, is Mr. Dust, uh, wanting to be a willing seller or not. And I'm sure he will depending on price.
That's exactly right.
And if he's a willing seller, it may make one option better than the other, and if it's not. It, you know. Because of the impacts, so.
Can, can the city attorney between now and next Monday have a discussion with the Duster Ops attorney and see if we can? Gloom some additional information.
I can certainly have discussions with them. I doubt who will negotiate a deal by, by next Monday. I mean, we can have discussions and get the flavors to what their thought process was. I did receive an email from him today. Um. So I can certainly reach out and start those discussions.
Great. In the meantime, should we do something tonight so we can go home?
Yes.
Mr. Crickle, anything further to add?
Nothing further, thank you.
Okay, so staff recommendation was. B one flip, frontage road, right turn, right, right out, right in, left out. Uh, left turn lane and U-turn capabilities. I just added that first. Anybody interested in making that?
Can we?
I'll make that. I'll make that portion.
Thank you, Mr. Rigel. There's a second, anyone?
Oh, I really wanna go home, but I don't know if I wanna second that.
Okay, well, perfect. Okay, so. You do have to go forward and I think we will rethink this if additional information comes for next week.
Certainly, yeah. Ms. Lonsky, you have further questions, comments?
Can we hit a, a, a cost estimate for how much that adding that U-turn will be? Does he need to add a left turn lane?
Pretty high level on our stat.
I think in compared to sixty million, it's pretty small, but still good to know.
And just to clarify, that will be for the B one alternative, because that cost goes to change depending on the alternative.
Correct. And, and if we can do a buyout, we don't need the U-turn. Yeah, this is one, that's correct, the B one east flip with the front of road. Right in, right out, left in, U-turn, left turn lane. Hey, does, does everybody, is one mark, did you get that? Excellent, thank you. Any other further comments? If you go to the other. Seeing none, there's a motion in the second and the fourth, all those in favor, see if I was saying aye.
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 Close same sign. Motion chair, you be honest with me. Thank you for being here tonight. Councilmember discussion, thanks for discussing, you know, Ms. Lonsky, Mr. Rigel.
No, thank you.
Mr. Veen, Mr. Webber.
Thank you.
It's our motion.
Yes, I'll leave too.